Father, we just thank you for another day you blessed us with. We thank you for all the blessings we have through you. We thank you for this board that as we look at decisions, whatever is made will be best for Henry County and the citizens. Be with each one in our county, all of our citizens. We just pray to watch over them and guide and lead us. Be with our country. Be with the men and women that's fighting for our freedom, that we might stand here tonight, keep them from harm's way, and just give each one safety as they drive home tonight. And we give you the praise and thanks for it all in Jesus' name. Amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Madam Clerk, roll call please.
This is a regular meeting of the Henry County Board of County Commissioners being held on Tuesday, May 8th, 2018, at 5:00 PM in the City Commission Chambers in Pluston, Florida. In attendance are Chairman Mitchell Wills, Vice Chair Emma Byrd, Commissioner Darrell Harris, Commissioner Michael Swindle, Commissioner Carson Turner, County Administrator Charles Chapman, County Attorney Mark Lapp, Deputy Clerk Anita Bichelle.
Ma'am. I'd remind everyone, if you would like to speak tonight, if you would, grab a form and fill it out and please turn it in to the clerk. We would appreciate that and we'll get to you as quickly as we come. We have several public meetings to address tonight, so the same thing, if you'd like to speak, go ahead and get one of those forms, please, and fill it out. First thing on the agenda tonight is bids. RFQ 2018-07, Engineering and Design Service for Perishable Cargo Complex at Airglades Airport.
Mr. Chair, I'd make a recommendation to approve the suggestion given to us ranking as presented.
A second.
We have a motion by Commissioner Turner, second by Commissioner Byrd. Is there any further discussion?
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
Go ahead, argue.
I'd like to, do they have a rap here from CMA? Is there a rap here from CMA?
Yeah.
CMT?
Yeah, could, I just want a couple of questions.
Could you come up, please, ma'am?
Hi, my name is Laura Sackage with Crawford Murphy and Tilly.
Okay. What history do you have in Henry County and Airglades?
We've been actually working for Airglades International Airport for the past eight years. We've been heavily involved in the coordination with FAA on some of the approach procedures. We were a subconsultant to AECOM and did a lot of the purpose and need and alternatives analysis, the full noise analysis, involvement with the U.S. Fish and Wildlife and avoidance of the snail kite issue. We have an office here in LaBelle. I relocated from Illinois about three years ago, and I'm dedicated to Henry County and this project.
That's the only office you have in Florida?
Correct, correct, in LaBelle.
And then employees and firms, do you use all out of state?
No, we've actually teamed with Jacobs. They're one of the largest, if not the largest, engineering firm here in the U.S., maybe even world, and they've got several offices in Florida. They recently acquired CH Toom Hill. We're going to be teaming with them on some of the facilities and utilities analysis. We've got JR Evans who is, we're teaming with to do the stormwater, and they've had a lot of coordination with South Florida Water Management District, so.
Okay, are you going to use any firms like in Lee County, Henry County?
Yeah, GFA, the geotechnical company that's done a lot of the, most of, if not all the geotechnical work at the airport. They're on our team. We've got Orville Howard with Survey One to do some of the mapping, field surveys for our firm also.
Okay, because like I said, the concern was that, you know, the local engineers or people wouldn't, wouldn't have an opportunity, that the work would be shipped off.
Right.
I have no questions, just comments for the board. And in reading this, I, I was trying to put a number to it. It was when Charlie Martinez was on the board. How many years ago is that, man? That's when I started the, I was asked by Charlie Martinez to sit on the Airglades Advisory Board at that time, and I remember AECOM then making the first presentation at the first meeting that I went to. And all along the way, they've been there, they've done everything from rehabbing runways, rehabbing aprons, and widening runways, lengthening runways, and now that we're at a point where we're really moving forward with the progress, you know, not, not taking away from the credibility or the ability of CMT, that is absolutely not the case. I just want to ensure that the companies that's been with us and provided for us, we continue to provide for them as we move forward.
Right, I understand. As far as the knowledge on this project itself, the actual perishable complex, we feel like we have unprecedented. We've been there eight years, brand-new runway. We actually were one of the last to commission a brand-new runway at O'Hare, our company did, in 2015. Jacobs, who we're teamed with, commissioned the one before that in 2013, so we have a lot of experience and we look for your vote of confidence.
Well, absolutely, not a, not a vote of negative confidence at all. I have no doubt in the abilities of your firm and what you can do. Again, I just want to read it to the board that I hope that we start setting some precedents of our own, that, you know, we have local folks that have been with us for a long time, and if we start setting a precedence of not protecting them and making sure that we have worked for our local industry, I don't know how we're going to expect anyone else to do the same.
Because AECOM's been there 15 years or over.
I don't know, I don't know an exact number. I know they've been there as long as I have. Whatever.
Mr. Chair, for clarification, and I'm hearing the terms "local vendors and local preference," and by no means am I trying to redirect the conversation, but to provide a point of clarification that within this particular RFQ, local vendor preference was not included because of a restriction within the state funding source. This is the $1 million from the Senate Bill 10 Act. Understandably, that this board has always been very supportive of local vendors, and we normally do have a local vendor preference built into RFQ, RFP process, but for this particular one, it was not allowed by the assurances afforded to that particular funding.
But they are...
Understood.
And just, just to read it, we do have the office and we are committed to expanding in Henry County. We're here to stay, so just wanted to make that point.
I hope you do.
Yes, ma'am, no, no one's saying anything negative. We just like to make sure we support the locals that have been here working for many years, and we want to keep them here working, and our main goal is to keep the, you know, to keep the funds allocated in Henry County, so we appreciate that. Thank you. Is there any further discussion?
Good, good, good conversation, Mr. Chair.
Seeing none, all those in favor. Opposed?
Nay.
Motion carries.
Mr. Chair, on the next item, I'm, I'm just nervous about that price. If you feel that Tetra Tech and you feel that this is okay, but boy, it sure does seem like the other horses are right there within a $14,000 spread of each other, and, I mean, boy, that's, that's a big number.
It is a big number. For the record, Shane Parker, County Engineer. It is a big spread, and this was delayed from the last board meeting due to that difference. Their references, Tetra Tech did call their references. Tetra Tech was nervous about writing a letter of recommendation until they could get some more references. They have spoke to some local references that were not included in their bid supplemental, and they all vouched for them. So the main thing is we got to make sure that surety's correct in the bonding.
That is, it's almost double.
It is.
Well, and my thing, Mr. Chair, my concern is, is I don't know any of these entities at all, could not, could not even attempt to vouch for any of them, and don't nearly know this industry either. But I don't want us to get into a project and be able to do 75% of it or 50% of it, and then, you know, they realize, there's a realization, and so if you're telling me, Shane, that Tetra Tech has that base covered, then I'm all about, you know, the approval process and let's, let's move it forward.
Tetra Tech said they had good references, but key is the contract language and the bond.
And, and, but also, I mean, I don't know if this is laid out from a pay item perspective. I mean, obviously, I'm a policymaker for the county. This is just one of the things that we have to look at from a time, from time to time. And so I want an assurance from you, and I'm not asking this in this manner to put you on the spot, and so if you want us to delay, I don't know if there's time sensitive, but do you, Shane Parker, with the gray matter that you have between your ears, feel confident that the, the pay items are covered and that the, the contract can be performed at this number, with it being so great indifference? Or, or do you have any reservation, or has Tetra Tech confirmed on that? You know, it looks like it's a liner, so I'm assuming there's a per linear foot, or, you know, I don't really know. If it was a jack and bore or something like that, I could get into some specific...
It was all cleaning lines.
Okay.
Lineal foot, stuff like that.
And so, I, I, what I'm hearing from you from a non-verbal communication is you think the bases are covered and we can move forward.
Think the bases are covered, as long as the contract's signed and we have the correct bond in place.
Okay.
But if they can't provide it, we go down to the second lowest bidder.
And, and that's always a, a part of how we conduct business, and you guys have the green light to do that, so.
But if you get halfway through it...
We have to call the bond.
Call the bond?
Call it, yeah.
But, but Commissioner Harris, what I'm saying is that's not an option to me, getting halfway through it and exercising a bond. If you're doing that, that's like the worst-case scenario when you have to actually engage in contract language.
Or have to come back and ask for more funds to finish it, because their bid is very, is high, but it's low compared to the other bids.
Yes, ma'am, and what I'm, what I'm saying, Ms. Byrd, is that, as Tetra Tech expressed to you, and I apologize for not having this conversation with you offline, I would normally have done that, but do you feel today, in looking at these numbers, and from, from your expertise, because here's what's going to happen, when Port LaBelle Utility Systems can't get this contract performed, Henry County and the Board of County Commissioners are incompetent, and they're not able to do their job. And Ms. Byrd, how much do you know about lining a conduit for, I know the exact same amount. If I got a plumbing issue, I call up Pam's Plumbing and/or Daddy, okay? I don't like tucking duty or any of that stuff, okay? And as it relates to this, this number is absurdly low, and I have concerns. If this was roofing a house, I would tell you, you're crazy. There's no way you're going to have a discrepancy on that. And, you know, I know like on our ship program, we throw the bottom one out. I completely disagree with that sometimes, too, but I'm just, you understand what I'm saying. I want to make sure that the bases are covered and that the contract can simply be performed at this number, because it is so greatly off.
Shane is guaranteeing it.
Tetra Tech, Tetra Tech is saying...
I won't take anything to the bank to the grave.
The engineering, the, the people that we have hired to assess and say that they can do it, have assured you that they can get it done.
Assured their references are good.
When you looked at that number, what did you do?
Someone missed something on a bid?
That's exactly, they, they left it, they bought a job.
Then you dou, you double-checked it.
It doesn't sound like anyone has. It doesn't sound like Tetra Tech has either, and I don't want, I don't want to sign a contract and somebody's sitting there knowing today that they can't perform. I don't think I can legally ask, is there a representative from National Water Main Cleaning here? But believe me, you, when I opened up my board packet, I wanted to call them up, from, you know, contractor to contractor, and say, hey, guys, what did y'all leave out? I mean, it's not, it's not a bad thing. They may even want to walk away from it, you know? They may even want to just say, I mean, I've done that before.
Did Danny check this over?
Danny, yeah.
So Danny is responsible?
Tyler Wainwright with Danny's firm. I mean, we can bring it back at the next board meeting, and I can talk to Mark Lapp about possibly...
Is it Danny Nelson?
Danny Nelson?
This is his firm, Tyler Wainwright with Danny Nelson's firm.
Danny, Danny Nelson represents...
Can we bring it back at the next meeting?
We can bring it back at the next board meeting.
If Danny Nelson signed off on this, then it's good to go. He, he, he would have already made that.
That's what I thought, he would have made that.
Tyler Wainwright, we're sure, this memo is from Tyler Wainwright with Danny Nelson's firm, Tetra Tech. We can bring it back at the next board meeting.
I'm sure Danny would have checked it.
On the other side of it.
Commissioner Mills? How many times have you seen this and you throw it out?
I have seen that many times and wanted to throw up.
Yeah.
Not so much throw out, but throw up, because we've had contractors come in for the county as long as I've worked for the county, and they'd come in with a bid like that, and we didn't anticipate this, we didn't anticipate that.
That's exactly right.
This was hidden, that was hidden, so I, when you have a bid that's so far off, it's really, I think we really need to look at this a little more myself as well. If they can come into that and do it, amazing, but if...
Table it to the LaBelle meeting.
Can we, can we table it for 14 days, Mr. Chair? Would that make you...
Are we time-sensitive, are we good on that?
We can, we can table it.
Just table it to the next LaBelle meeting.
I guess the other part about that, they may be exactly right, and these other guys may be going, we're really busy.
I thought so, we'll save money.
We're really busy.
Well, not now, if you go back to them now, they're going to say, yeah, you know, we did leave $50,000 out of that for, we totally forgot we had to haul it off, absolutely, thank you for...
Then it's not acceptable, Commissioner Swindle, it's not acceptable then. Listen, this is not a, this is not, to your concerns, Commissioner Swindle...
Not rebid.
This is not being rebid, and this is not a situation, this is public dollars, right? There's money allocated in a budget to perform this contract. There was a, there was an engineer's estimate, that's why we hired that engineer to do that. The engineer had an estimate, I think, of $110,000 as related to this job. To me, the engineer should sit down with this company, they should go through it line item by line item and say yes. The fact that you're telling me they just checked references...
No, they've been checking references.
Okay.
We asked why we didn't throw them in the last board meeting, we couldn't find anything to disqualify them for.
But just get with Danny, tell him that that number's a little bit too high, can he check it out?
To me, to me, to me, Mark, to me, Mr. Chairman, there's a process here. The process is very transparent, they need to simply go through it line item by line item. If they're able to perform the job at that number, then that's what it is, it's locked in and they're able to do the work. If they're not, then they walk, and it's that simple, and then you go to number two.
Number two.
It's, it's, Mr. Chair, does anybody on the commission disagree? And do, do we not think that two weeks is...
No, let's write it back.
The last thing I would ask is, is there somebody here from this entity that would like to speak to this issue right now? And if they are, and they feel comfortable talking about it, I'm all about listening to why then they feel that their number's where it is. If they're not, then I'd just say we wait until two weeks and move the ball down the field.
You don't, you don't need a motion table, do you, Mark?
Yeah, we need a motion to table.
Move the table to...
Time, sir.
Time sensitive, next board meeting in LaBelle.
Second.
Motion by Commissioner Harris, second by Commissioner Turner. Any further discussion?
And that'd be a Danny Nelson deal?
No.
You got to turn it back over to Danny?
Let me ask another question, Mr. Chair, for clarification. Have we already voted? I'm sorry.
We have not.
In a situation like this, Mark, we should never reach out to individual bidders. That's illegal. It's inappropriate.
Well...
Is this still in the closed period? Because this is, or is this because it's plus, we could be able to talk to them?
Well, they're not allowed to talk to you.
Oh.
As far as you talking to them, I don't know, that'd just be awkward. I mean, that's what staff are for.
Okay. Because I just, I just wanted to ask that, I was dying to ask that question, I was like, man, I can call. Look it up.
Staff can.
Okay.
Shane and Danny can do the talking.
And then, and then, so, so, okay, so I, so I can't legally get in any trouble for that, but you would highly, you would just advise against it because it's awkward.
Right.
I think that's just, it's awkward because people get weird talking about money. I think if you're in a contracting world, it is what it is, especially whenever you have dollars allocated for a contract, you know? So, okay, I just want to make sure it wasn't out of line, and I'll, I'll do anything in my power to, to avoid that. Shane, once again, I apologize for not having called you prior to...
Any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Pardon that to the first meeting in LaBelle. Raise to the consent agenda, we are pulling item B4.
Motion to approve balance.
I'll second, Chair.
Motion by Commissioner Turner, second by Commissioner Swindle. Any further discussion on the agenda? Seeing none, all those in favor.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Mr. Parker, would you like to address number four, please?
For the record, Shane Parker, County Engineer, I forgot to include the resolution that's required to go with that JPA, so just ask that you approve the JPA along with the resolution.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Motion by Commissioner Turner to approve, second by Commissioner Harris. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Mr. Chair, one thing that I almost pulled on consent, and I just wanted to ask a question in general, is, are we holding up any contract work because of those change orders not being able to be approved? Did we, did we stop progress from being made, Shane, or are y'all timing it up so well?
No, no progress is being stopped.
Because none of them were of a great number, and I just thought, if it's a nominal fee like that, why couldn't we have the ability, Mark, you know, to, Charles, to do the same thing with, you know, with your ability as county administrator to approve up to X and just make it move forward? Or is that, as it relates to contract documents, it can't? Because, you know, some of them obviously are multimillion-dollar contracts, multi-year, so on and so forth.
We could include, I, I, we use standard form contracts, and the standard form contracts, to the extent they're greater than $10,000, which these are, the initial contract amount I'm talking about.
The initial contract, but none of the change, well, one of them was, but, yeah.
The, all of these were more than 10 to begin with, right?
I can't remember. We lumped them together, there's a couple of different ones we put together, one was like $1,800, one was, might have been...
No, no, I'm talking about the original contract.
No, the original contract was massive.
Yeah, and so...
Nobody's, nobody's arguing on that one.
My point is, is that the contract says, since it's a board-approved contract, it can't be amended without the board's approval. That's our standard wording. So if you want to change our standard wording to say that the administrator may approve, you know, change orders of this nature or this amount, you know, you can give that direction, it will change our standard form agreements so that you don't have to see them and they just go straight to the administrator.
I think you need to do that.
Which one?
Fix it where he can do the change orders.
No, so, Mr. Chair, the only thing I would, the only thing I would add is I'm receptive to it. I would love to hear what Charles thinks about it. I think that it would be really good, from a perspective of Charles, being able to learn those different aspects associated with different contracts, it's going to make him have to be a much more formidable expert in those things for years to come. Obviously, I would like to keep it in the threshold of what we're at, but my biggest goal here is to not prohibit progress, because it has to get in front of us. At the end of the day, we've already approved the big picture, get it done. That's all we want to see is infrastructure upgrades occur, and so we're sitting here waiting on an $1,800 change order, or a $10,000 change order, or $17,000, it's not anything in the grand scheme of things as it relates to the overall contract being performed. And you know how much that holds everything up sometimes.
Right, except you got to wait two weeks.
Yeah, yeah, and then what if it's one of those weird months, Commissioner, where...
Meet once.
Yeah, you know, we meet once, or, or there's a holiday, and so, Shane, do you hate that idea?
No, I don't. I actually have another change order coming before you that we're, we just were going over, but we try to put them together...
Yeah.
...as they come in. They weren't planned, they were owned or initiated, but they need to happen right now, so...
Charles, do you have any holdups?
Mr. Chair, so one, one thing that, obviously, if this was my money and my, my company, it would be a little bit different level of swagger when I'm, from what I'm about to say, but because it is the public's dollar and we want to be transparent throughout the entire process and make sure that we're doing all the quality assurance, quality control we can when we're putting these projects out to bid, and it's, it's the public's money. We want to make sure that they know what's happening within these contracts, and it's going to sound odd coming out of my mouth when I say this, but I would love to have a ceiling put on with my authority for the change orders contractually, so that it's limited, that it's not seen in the public's eye that we're giving good old boy change orders to contractors behind closed doors and it doesn't go through a public process. That's my only fear, I'm not saying that's what we would do. Lord knows that that's not what we would do under my administration, but I just want to make sure that there's some, some assurances there, that the board can have confidence moving forward, that there is a limit to the change order ability of the, of the administrator to sign off without it coming back before the board.
Is there a possibility we look at this in the same case scenario that we looked with the budgeting? If it was an emergency situation, you would have capacity to do X, or if it was no time sensitivity on it, Waco did not just come back, and that way you're covering both bases. You have something's an emergency, administrator can push it through and go with it. If it's not an emergency, it comes right through the public process, just like, like it does now.
Mr. Chair, that's why I brought it up after we voted on it, because I didn't want to hold up the process, and in the event that there are contractors that are listening to us right now, they'd say, those people have lost their minds, I'm not going to conduct business with them because they're watching every little thing that we do...
Right.
...at the board level, and that's, you don't get anything done at this level. And so, you know, what I would tweak to what Charles said and what you said, and kind of marry those two together, would say, Charles, I, I just say that we still make everything come back to us, even if it's on consent...
Ratify.
...so that, so that we can see what it is, but we discourage the time-sensitive issue ever being something that prohibits progress from being made, number one. Number two is, at the end of the year, unless you want to do it biannually, which I'm all about, I love looking at stuff more than less, is if, if Henry County is going to do $25 million worth of contract-specific work this year, it would be really neat to look at our graph and see how nominal our number is, comparatively speaking, on the change order or supplemental agreement, you know, you don't do a lot of that, Shane.
A lot of change orders.
That's impressive to me.
You don't.
The volume of work that you push out every year from a fiscal standpoint, and the lack of change order and/or supplemental tasks that you allow to even occur is an impressive number, and I think it speaks volumes to you, the contractors that we have that are working in Henry County and the staff that we have that are, that are overseeing that, because it means that y'all, y'all clearly have a teamwork mindset and you're, you're, you're getting the job done at the price that it was, that it was bid at. So I just think that, you know, an easy way to, to circumvent what you're saying and allow that transparency to come to the top is, you know, have a running slide that says, this year, Henry County experienced, you know, a quarter of a million dollars in change orders. Well, that sounds like a big number, but if you did $30 million worth of work, quarter of a million at the grand date, you know, it's, it's 1% of things, you know?
So if I could, I agree with that completely. So what I'm hearing is that the board is willing to entertain increasing a county administrator discretion threshold for change orders, and if I might suggest that it mirror the emergency discretion, which is $40,000, and that you would like to see a ratification agenda item put on the next available board meeting so that you can have it as a part of the transparent process, one, and then a potential biannual report on our overall contract volume to show STAs and change orders that have happened year-to-date.
Mr. Chair, I would make that in the form of a motion, and Mark, I'm dying to hear what your brow is telling us with the furrows.
Well, his contracting authority is 10,000.
Okay.
His emergency authority is 40,000.
Yes, sir.
So I just want to be clear whether, you know, and the definition, an emergency is a defined condition in our ordinance, so I don't know.
Then, Mark, I'd say we tweak it and just make it 10,000 and be done, and see how many times they need to come back to us.
Does it got to be change order only?
Nope, it could be change order or supplemental task, any, any, anything that's...
He's already got that.
That's moving towards contract, and as it relates specifically to an emergency, which is defined by X, then that would, then that would already be in there.
That's already in there, yeah.
Yes, sir.
So, and the other thing is that this idea of ratification, I don't know, something like that, because if you, you sign a document, you're committing to it, and that's the whole point, we're binding ourselves, and if it has to be ratified...
It's a placeholder for us to see. It's just a placeholder for us to see.
Well, and then it'd be an information item, not a ratification.
Maybe our correspondence, FYI, I'm never around him to the board.
Yes, sir. Just, just looking at your, 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 your report that we already have, that I love, that I look at every time you give it to us. That's in towards the back of the agenda, you know, but it just gives us the list of projects. I love looking at that. Now you just add an Excel cell in there that says. Contract price, change order numbers, you know. And then, I mean, if you really want to, if you really want to make me just love it, you know, the schedule, substantial completion and where we're at, but I know you, okay, yeah.
I have said sheet.
Color track days added. I mean, that's awesome, you know, or subtracted.
Sheet never changed.
You subtract it, bud. We making that money now, Hendrick County, so, okay.
Second. So we gotta, we'll push this through. We got a motion by Commissioner Turner, second by Commissioner Harris. Is there any further discussion on this or?
None.
Seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
opposed, motion carries. It's going to bring us to awards and appearances. We've got several tonight. The first one is a proclamation concerning May fourteenth as being child welfare professional recognition day. Do we have anybody in here from that? Anybody with us tonight with that? I believe that's, that's something that gets overlooked a lot and we, there is definitely a need within every society, not just ours. So the proclamation will be May fourteenth will be child welfare professional recognition day from hence going forth. We also have a resolution to support of our national park systems.
Motion to approve said resolution.
Which, which both of them?
Yes.
Motion by Commissioner Turner, second by Commissioner Harris. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
opposed, motion carries. The next one is going to be the National Hospital Week. Is Mr. Williams with us?
Yes, he is.
I read it out, Mr. Williams. We're going to read this into the minutes. The proclamation of the Board of County Commissioners of Hendrick County, Florida proclaiming May sixth through the twelfth, twenty eighteen, is National Hospital Week. Whereas the American Hospital Association has proclaimed May sixth through the twelfth, twenty eighteen, as National Hospital Week with the official theme carrying is our current calling. And whereas individuals all across the county will be celebrating this time honored event. And whereas the hardworking people that compose Henry Regional Medical Center and other hospitals deserve universal regard and appreciation for keeping our community healthy. Whereas the commemorative celebration demonstrates the hospitals are foundations of communities that build them and nurture them. And whereas residents are urged to express their appreciation for the people, facilities and technologies that make the trustworthy, reliable healthcare possible in our community. And now therefore, the Hendrick County Board of County Commissioners, Hendrick County, Florida, does hereby proclaim May sixth through the twelfth as National Hospital Week. Duly considered and adopted by the County Commission, Florida, this eighth day of May, twenty eighteen. We thank you very much, Mr. Williams, for all that you do for our communities and the hospitals and the clinics. And thank you so much. Would like to present this to you. Yes, sir. He was ready to present this tonight.
You gotta vote too, if I'm feeling bad.
Okay. Vote, vote, vote. Don't go nowhere.
Motion to approve, Mr. Chair.
I'll second.
Motion by Commissioner Turner, second by Commissioner Swindle. Any further discussion? Favor?
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. We get a picture with that? Yep. Easy, Mr. Turner. Well, they called me to run that way, Miss Bird. It wouldn't be good. Thank you again, sir. Under D is the land use study for land surrounding the Air Glades Airport. Ms. Embly.
Yes, thank you, Commissioners. As you know, the staff and along with Waltrip Engineering have been conducting a land use study for properties that surround the Air Glades Airport in preparation for future development in that area. Tonight Alexis Crespo from Waltrip Engineering is going to provide a presentation of the findings to date and two recommended alternative land use exhibits that, just to keep in mind, these are not recommendations that would be adopted at this point. These are just recommendations that for, for the board to consider. And we will, we would come back to the board after we submit the final report to the Department of Economic Opportunity with some specific recommendations on where to take this information going forward. And at this point in time, I'll turn this over to Alexis. And after the presentation, we're both available for questions.
Thank you. Thank you, Margaret. Good evening. Alexis Crespo with Waltrip Engineering. It's a pleasure to be here. You've got a lot of great airport related items on your agenda tonight, and so we're happy to present some preliminary land use scenarios based upon about a three month effort we've been undergoing here in relation to the Air Glades Airport. So what we wanted to do tonight was give you an overview of the, the study that we've been conducting. Share with you some of the information we brought out to your public through the community outreach meetings we've had through February and March. Present to you two alternative land use scenarios and then also certainly hear your feedback, questions and comments on the, on the study. So why are we here? You've approved an RFP to design the PAC complex at Air Glades. It's clear based on FAA approvals that are in place that this airport is ready for expansion. So in light of that, there's going to be potentially significant changes to land uses surrounding the airport, demand for airport support uses in that area. And right now, your future land use zoning and a lot of the framework guiding development in that area really only contemplates long-term agricultural activities. So there is certainly a need based upon the advancements the airport has made in their expansion plans to go ahead and really look at your whole framework from a land use planning perspective. And certainly based upon the good work that Margaret and her team have been doing with the state agencies in regards to development, economic development opportunities. We wanted to make sure that we lay the groundwork so that you have adequate lands and a plan in place to support the growth of this airport due to the significant impact it can have on, on job growth and other great industries affecting Hendrick County. We also really use this as a great opportunity to get out to the public, educate them on, on what's been occurring with the airport. And also get their input through the process. We have some folks here tonight who've came to each and every meeting we had. So it was really exceptional, some of the, the level of input we got from the community. So what, what are we looking at when we talk about a land use study? We assessed the county's current framework for development surrounding the airport in terms of your future land use map, your long range twenty thirty plan, twenty thirty year plan, rather, for the area. We also looked at your zoning districts, available infrastructure, both planned as well as programmed today. And then we went from there to recommend various land use scenarios based upon that data that was available to us. As Margaret has noted, we wanted to emphasize this, certainly when looking at a large area like this and looking at intensive airport uses. People can be fearful about the intent of this study. It's not to make these changes today to allow someone to go construct industrial uses up and down County Road Eight Thirty Three. This is simply a long range planning tool that your staff can use to evaluate forthcoming changes, both privately initiated as well as publicly initiated on that future land use map. So no changes are going to be made by way of these scenarios. It's just a planning tool. And this was all done based on a grant provided by the Department of Economic Opportunity or DEO. And we had a pretty tight timeframe. We've, we've hit all those dates and we're going to issue a final report to them to fully satisfy the grant requirements by June of this year. So the study area that was established at the outside of the project is approximately thirty-five thousand acres. Certainly Hendrick County is land rich. There's lots of land to be looking at around the airport. And we just utilized some general geographical boundaries to guide what that boundary would be. We have the city of Clueston, Harlem is our eastern boundary. The Glades Hendrick County line to the north is the northern boundary. Generally, County Road Eight Thirty Three is the west boundary. However, we did want to pick up the two sections of land just west of that intersection as there'd be some logical commercial nodes that would likely spring up at that key arterial intersection. And then the southern boundary, we, we took the rail into account, but also used Flag Hole as a general southern boundary for the area. Our timeline, we started in March with a robust community outreach effort, including meetings with all the property owners within that thirty-five thousand acres. They were all notified of the study, met with them first and then had a series of community meetings in Clueston as well as in Flag Hole. From there, we prepared a preliminary assessment report, which was submitted to DEO. Have developed two alternative land use planning scenarios. And then we're here today as part of the public hearing process to get that information out and get further input in order to again submit that final report by June first. So at our community meetings, the, the main thing was what's going on with the airport, what, what's the status of it? Everyone was very interested and intrigued by it. And Bubba Wade Jr. With U.S. Sugar was there to very eloquently explain the history of the project. And the main, the main points were to explain the ten thousand linear foot runway that is approved by way of the airport layout planner, ALP, that FAA has signed off on. We also explained the future PAC facility as well as maintenance and repair, really over a million square feet of, of uses on the airport property to support what will be a cargo airport to relieve Miami. The other item that we shared with the public is it really does guide the land use study is how aircraft will be arriving and departing from the airport. And again, we had the experts that really designed these flight patterns at the community meetings. But in general, there's some snail kite habitat along Lake Okeechobee. And so whether the aircraft is northbound or southbound when arriving due to winds, it would certainly be turning to avoid the snail kite habitat. That was one of the key items of the environmental assessment. And so this generally directs noise contours as arriving and departing aircraft generate, in some cases, significant noise, depending on how close you are to the airport. And this is, this is difficult to see with the lighting, but this is the noise contour map that was very important to guiding this effort. Oh, that's, that's a little bit better. And you can see that there's colored lines to demonstrate the, the noise contours. And what DNL stands for, it's a twenty-four hour time weighted average noise metric. It's expressed in decibels. And so the louder the noise is, the more restrictive you want your land uses to be. So the key DNL barriers we looked at was the sixty-five noise zone. And this is where you're going to hear later on your agenda where you really need to look at restricting uses that are going to fall within this area more or less because they wouldn't be a comfortable place for people to live, for you to have uses like hotels, daycare, things of that nature. So we wanted to be very respectful about what could occur within those areas. And other compatibility issues in regards to the flight path and the noise contours, also building height for arriving aircraft, smoke, glare and wildlife. So all that was taken into account in the study. From a land use planning perspective, we wanted to understand what your future land use map allows today. The beige color on the screen is clearly the predominant land use category around your airport. The airport's shown in that industrial gray color. And your agricultural future land use category does allow some limited non-residential uses such as the juice plant on Eight Thirty Three. But really it is for your active and passive agricultural uses. And it does allow for the development of ranchettes or large lot subdivisions, which would certainly not be a use you want in and around your, your airport. And it would also preclude some of the good higher intensity industrial uses that you'd need to support a cargo airport, such as your logistics, warehousing, distribution, et cetera. The other thing of note on your future land use map are these areas in the dark red, certainly more prevalent as you get into Clueston. And that's your multi-use future land use category. And it is the most flexible category that exists within the comprehensive plan today and that allows a certain amount of low to medium density residential uses as well as a mix of commercial, light industrial type uses. So it is flexible. There has been some requests to convert to this land use category. I believe you also have one on your agenda this evening in response to the anticipated growth in this area. So there, there is a demand for land uses that allow something other than just your agricultural type uses. The zoning map is, is very similar to your future land use. They're generally consistent in that the predominant zoning district is ag and you have some limited rural estates planned development and then some commercial along the twenty-seven frontage. But certainly the zoning map is not supportive of the types of uses you'd want to see in and around your airport as well. And then land uses, the key item here is that you haven't had a lot of development occurring in this area where, in other more urbanized environments, you've got residential neighborhoods that are coming up and around the airport and you haven't had that growth pressure yet. And so you've got land that is clear of incompatible uses at present time. It's predominantly active and passive agriculture nature with some limited commercial along eighty and twenty-seven. So when we went out to the community, we gave them that kind of background of, of the anticipated expansion of the airport and also what was permitted today by the land use planning framework in place. And then we started to talk about what types of uses would you like to see, certainly speaking with landowners in the area. What would they like to see their property converted to? What, where would they like to see those types of uses located in relation to the major roadways and the gateway to Clueston and other of the established surrounding residential neighborhoods? So we talked a lot about heavy industrial and what that looks like as well as light industrial. There's also going to be a need for commercial to support the people that are going to be working and living in the area proximate to the airport based upon the employment generators expected. So we laid out some heavy industrial examples, your aircraft, truck repair, manufacturing, processing, as well as some lighter flex industrial space where you can have a little bit lower intensity, but still uses that are going to be needed in and around the airport. Also, commercial to get input on the different types of, of commercial uses that would spring up, including office, business parks, support retail and services. Certainly the lands closest to the airport, you don't want to have converted to your local convenience type retail uses. But when you take into account that this subject area is thirty-five thousand acres in size, as you get to your major arterial intersections, you'll want to look to those supportive commercial uses. And then lastly, a part of the equation that we wanted people to consider and think about would be workforce housing, places for people to live and around the area that could also serve to buffer some of the established neighborhoods like Montura, Flag Hole, Harlem that are in and around this area as well that wouldn't want to be abutting against new industrial uses per se. And we also want to be thoughtful about where we locate those residential uses though, in, in relation to those noise contours and where the aircrafts are going to be arriving and departing and creating that noise. So as I've noted, we had a series of three meetings as well as our meeting with our property owners to gain input. And we had them circulate around and provide input on the character of land uses they wanted to see, intensities and densities, types of uses. We did have meetings ranging from about three or four people all the way up to about twenty-five, thirty. Actually, our last one in Flag Hole was most widely attended. Got some really good input there. And I think in general, certainly Flag Hole was interested in, in having a transition from the heavy airport uses to their north and having some intermediate uses between their community and the airport. But in general, I think the takeaway was the community was excited about the opportunity that the airport will bring to the area. And they were not afraid of, of the heavier industrial uses, not concerned about having those in and around the community and saw the opportunities that would bring in terms of jobs. And also, everybody was really good about providing input on where they wanted to see those uses located in relation to the airport, the roadway system. This is just one of the boards. We, we had different ones each night, but you'll see, we use blue to do industrial and civic type uses. So most people wanted to see that right around the airport. Obviously proximity would be important for, for convenience of the truck traffic that would need to go there. And also keeping it just along some of the main corridors and not letting that heavy industrial use get too far out from the boundaries of the airport. There was desire for mixed use and commercial uses at the key intersections as well as into the gateway to Clueston. And then a lot of the, the input, this was not the board from Flag Hole, but you can see some yellow there where people wanted to see some residential transition to the established neighborhoods just outside the boundary. So it's pretty consistent in terms of, of the input we received on where the land uses should be located. From there, we've prepared a preliminary assessment report. And the key findings of that report is, is Hendrick County has sufficient undeveloped land around the airport to really support the long-term growth of, of the airport in a thoughtful way. There's also limited residential uses intruding into this area. So we don't have major compatibility issues that we need to, to plan around at current time. And that also the future land use element, the map that you have in place really needs to be further examined moving forward because there's not existing future land use categories that provide the appropriate level of industrial uses, but also limit some of the incompatible uses that you want to protect from being converted from in, in the future. So with that, we have developed a couple of different land use scenarios. We looked at guiding those by compatibility, where the established neighborhoods were, what uses should be proposed in and around those areas. We wanted a strong economic development focus to ensure that the land uses, the categories, the Florida area ratio would be of sufficient intensity to really support what will be a major cargo airport in the future. A major piece of the puzzle that still needs to be worked on is, is the infrastructure needs to support these land use changes as well as the airport and roadway interconnectivity within this area. You've got some, some arterial roadways to work with, but there's very little in ways of, of network and connectivity through a very large study area. And then also looking to the existing environmental constraints, wildlife hazards, et cetera. So we, we developed some, some general categories to, to guide the, the land use plan. We didn't use existing future land use categories. This is not intended to necessarily serve as a future land use category. This is a description of what the intent of the land use should be. So the key land use description is the airport enterprise zone we created. And that is really where the primary focus of the land should be on heavy and light industrial uses based on proximity to the airport and based on the need to reserve those lands for your logistics, your manufacturing, the types of uses you need to support the long-term growth of, of that industry. A secondary emphasis, but also some need to have support commercial within those lands. And these lands would not be appropriate for residential due to the, the heavy industrial nature as well as proximity to the airport and the flight paths. And the thought here was a fairly high Florida area ratio of one point zero, which a simple way of explaining that is on a one acre piece of property, you could have approximately forty-three thousand square foot buildings. So a pretty intense building footprint when you put it in perspective. The other land use category you see on the descriptions is the agricultural enterprise. So this was intended to protect existing productive agricultural lands and also allow for some ability to do ag-related businesses so that it wouldn't be a strictly passive agriculture use. But you could have some businesses to support the floral industry, processing plants, et cetera, that could be agriculture nature, but at the same time in close proximity to this key growth node that is the airport. This would also look to have limitations on residential. That could be done through a variety of ways, through an overlay district, through amendments to your land development code. But certainly these are located in areas where you wouldn't want residential, again, due to the, the arriving and departing aircraft. The other descriptions you'll see are some mixed use areas. These are very similar to your, your multi-use category as it sits today. So the more urban mixed use category would be along your arterial road frontages. That could allow for a. That could allow for a mix of residential, commercial as well as some light industrial and would be again at your key intersections and gateway areas. This could have higher density residential to support that workforce housing where people may not be able to be in a single-family detached type product, but they could have attached townhomes, things of that nature. And then suburban was intended to provide a bit of a transition from these higher intensity nodes, the intensity of the airport, as we work our ways to the outer edges of the study boundary towards Flag Hole, Montura, and Harlem. Land use scenario one, you can see the different components on this. We've got approximately 11,000 acres set aside for the Airport Enterprise Zone. That is a substantial land area to service those light and heavy industrial uses in the future. This area was extended all the way to include that major intersection of 27 and 80 due to the nature of how that's been improved over the years. It didn't necessarily lend itself to a commercial retail type node, so that was the thought process there. And the study boundary along 80 and then getting into Clueston was anchored by these urban mixed use zones that would provide a transition from your heavy industrial to your established communities. The agricultural enterprise as shown in green includes the existing juice plant and a lot of these existing agricultural lands. And that was intended to serve as a buffer between the airport and the existing communities. And we use the rail line as really a logical ending point for that transition. And then lastly, this provides the opportunity for a fairly substantial mixed use community along the eastern side of that Airport Enterprise area that could serve as a gateway into the city of Clueston via Harlem. I'll note that we've shown some potential corridors. It gets very problematic. Some people don't like to see roadways put across their property. So this is not intended to show complete network of what you will need in terms of roadway infrastructure to support this level of development. You will need a lot of new roadways in order to get traffic in and around this area. But we wanted to emphasize the point that certainly another way of getting in and out of Montura is needed as well as Flag Hole. That was one of their key concerns is with all the activity that's going to be going on on 27, they didn't want to be forced to go up Flag Hole Road and get on 27. So this blue line is not intended to be all the network you need, but just an idea to be considering in the future as these areas build out. Yes, sir.
If I could just add something to what Alexis is saying, Commissioners, is that you're looking at 35,000 acres. If you convert that into square miles, it's approximately 15 square miles. And we're not trying to recreate the community I'm about to compare it to, but just as a factoid is that the city of Naples is 16 square miles in totality. So if you can look at the area that is highlighted in yellow and think of it in terms of that kind of a development opportunity within 15 square miles, then you can kind of get an idea of what kind of a transportation network system we may be looking at 100 years from now at full buildout.
Thank you. The next scenario is slightly less intense. I'll note this was the local planning agency's preferred scenario. We tightened up the Airport Enterprise to approximately 7,000 acres immediately surrounding the airport and extended the urban mixed use type designation along the roadway frontage. The thought there was wanting to keep the roadway corridors as attractive corridors through the community and not wanting to have too much heavy industrial right on that roadway and really keep it around the airport. Certainly, that can be addressed regardless of use through your overlay districts. You have a state road 80 overlay district and looking at enhanced design standards to make sure that buildings are sited in a way and buffered so that your arterial roadways are still attractive and maintain the community character you're looking to achieve. This scenario has a higher emphasis on some residential communities in both the east and western portions of the site as well as some additional agricultural lands, again, serving as a buffer and transition from the airport down to Flag Hole. And we've maintained these concepts of nodes at your key intersections in and out of the study area as well as the idea of needing to build a network and connectivity and really a reliever corridor for local traffic other than Highway 27. So these are the two side by sides. You can see certainly, again, this is a little bit less intense. Still plenty of room through your 20, 30, 40-year planning horizon to accommodate the growth of the airport, similar in proportion to trade port and industrial lands in and around RSW based upon the acreage of that airport and the acreage as shown here. And then a higher emphasis on residential and mixed use communities that could be attracted to the area. So with that, we are collecting public input here tonight and looking to finalize the report. We can still make modifications to the land use scenarios based upon input. We've got just under a month to get this back up to DEO. And then that report will ultimately recommend not direct changes to your comprehensive plan but a framework for how to move forward in terms of potentially an overlay approach, addressing your infrastructure needs of short term and long term as well as land development code regulations, some of which are going to be addressed later on your agenda tonight in terms of limiting what uses can go within those highly sensitive 65 DNL noise zones to the north and south of that runway. And then something that Margaret's been working on and is really wanting to emphasize through this process is that idea of connectivity, complete streets that you are all working on currently and how to build that into this equation so that you're ensuring that the infrastructure being created through this will serve the long-term needs and be multimodal in nature. So with that, I'm happy to answer any questions you may have.
Ms. Chris Bott, that very, very comprehensive, it's very great presentation. I really appreciate it. It's a kind of a neat glimpse of what we could expect, you know, in the years to come and what this project may bring to the county. And I think it's overstating the obvious, but I want to make sure that I heard you correctly when I heard you say that the elephant in the room and the big thing that we don't have today and as we move forward, we're all going to be facing is the infrastructure, the lack of today, the lack of there. And so it's all going to have to be built and that's where the planning and the real Ford thinking is going to come in for the connectivity, the right uses.
Correct. If you tried to transmit map amendments that allowed for this amount of intensity, they need to know at that time how you are going to plan the water, the sewer, the roads to accommodate it. So that's certainly a big piece of the puzzle.
Okay. Thank you.
Who's going to do the roads?
Mr. Parker.
Mr. Parker's going to do the roads. That's how I heard that answer.
You would certainly need to engage additional consultants for transportation planning needs as you move forward. And if the overlay approach allows something flexible like with your sector planning that you've done throughout the county to lay out a framework without authorizing development to proceed. So you could use some interim planning tools to kind of set these land uses so that they don't get converted to uses you don't want to see around your airport, but at the same time be able to move that down the road in terms of how you're going to fund that infrastructure.
Let me add that the likelihood of any infrastructure at this point would be funded by the developers that would come in. And we're not suggesting that the county's going to be responsible for it, but we will help the process and make sure that the result of it is beneficial to the community.
That's exactly what I was going to say. Most of the meetings I'm setting in with RPC, that's exactly what it is. When your developer comes in, whatever interchange, whatever they have to put in, they actually, that's in their, that's in their design. So that's not, the way that's not going to fall back on us. That's actually going to be the developers. The infrastructure, like you said, though, it needs to be here now. And everyone you talk to, the first thing they want to know is, do you have the infrastructure? Or do we have the capability of actually even doing anything? Or are we still waiting on infrastructure to get there? So and I believe that's the key that we're, like you said a while ago, I believe that's one of the big keys.
Right. Well, anyway. And one of the things we can do is create those incentives for folks to come to this area to develop, you know, so that they will spend their dollars on the infrastructure and their development and so on. But that is one of the things that we will, the result of this would be making some recommendations that would go into our comp plan and our land development code that would create some incentives and try to minimize any obstacles that might be in our codes so that it would make it more conducive.
Did you get any comments from the LPA?
Well, generally, the LPA liked the scenario too, partly because of the yellow areas where it was more of a suburban, less intense development scenario. But outside of that, there really wasn't much, there weren't any additional comments.
So what's the, Margaret, what's the next step? After this, what's the next step?
Besides submitting the final report to the state by the first of June, we will then look at the recommendations here and staff would look at creating some recommendations back to the board on what type of changes we might want to consider in our comp plan and in our land development code that would create a framework for this area. We're not looking to make any specific changes to folks' properties. That will be up to the individual property owners. But what we want to do is create, I said, create a framework much like the West Hendry planning overlay and/or like the sector plans where we have the ability for them to go forward with development under the current land uses that are land use categories and zoning if they want to. Or we could, we can provide, again, an overlay and a framework that if they were to pursue this more intense development, that they would have to comply with certain design criteria, infrastructure, and so on, so that it, they would address any of the impacts that their development could have. But again, we want to add some incentives as well, so.
My understanding that the zoning won't change then, right?
It would change if the, not from the county, the, any changes to the zoning and the future land use designation would be a privately initiated change, not something that the county would do. Any other questions?
Say, Margaret, how far is the rail from the property?
I don't know the answer to that.
One mile south.
How many?
One mile south.
Okay.
Oh, to the south, yeah, I can, sorry, I can figure that out. Anyway.
All right. What's the next?
More questions or comments?
We want to offer to the public to see if there's any comments from the public.
Well, we can, there was none in the public, but we can actually, we can absolutely do that, but.
Okay. All right. Well, if you have any further questions, we'll, we'll hear.
Thank you.
Thank you, Alexis.
Thank you, Ms. Chris.
Thank you, Ms. Emily.
Thank you.
We're going to be getting to the public here in just a minute and I'm sure somebody will have something to ask about it. Ms. Taylor's asked to be put in the spot here, so we're going to bring her up.
Good evening, Commissioners.
Good evening.
And I certainly appreciate you all giving me this. Why are you looking surprised, Carson?
I wonder what you're going to say.
I certainly appreciate you all moved me in because I have another meeting. That's the only reason I asked. Otherwise, I would have stayed until comment time. I didn't want you to think I had any special privileges. I first like to say that I know you all have a thankless job, most of the time you think, but I come to say I thank you all and I appreciate you all for all that you do for our communities. And I want to say, Mark, I don't think Commissioner Bird has to report this, but I did by lunch for her and Jennifer. I don't think that it went above the thing, but I did want to let them know that, know that the best thing ever happened to me was losing the election and I'm here to support her 100% in whatever it is that she needs to do, because I have a lot of time on my hand now when I'm not traveling. So the second Tuesday in every month, I sit in on a round table in Glades in West Tech. And this morning, we had this round table. And I think the commission could be very concerned. They brought up Senate Bill 10 and Economic Development, 1.5 million dollar part of it. And they are under the impression that that money is only for Western Palm Beach County.
They are completely under that impression.
Yeah, and I had to just, and I'm always struggling to fight with them, but you know me, I'm going to fight with them. They said they've contacted Joe Paterno, which is our workforce development, and I guess have had no response from him. So what I'm here to ask you tonight is that if you would please take this on and have some input in, I'm going to give Charles the information. They're actually having a call-in meeting on Thursday morning at 10:00 that I'm not going to be, but I'm going to call in, that we can become a part of that and follow. But I would ask the board to personally contact, administration, contact Joe Paterno to see the counterpart in Palm Beach County that we could work together because we need that money for our constitution, their training as well. And if you all read that bill, it says Western Palm Beach County and Hendry County.
It's specifically the EAA.
Specifically the EAA. So that's what I'm here asking you all for tonight. If you all could please do that for me. I've got a lot of time on my hand and I'll be going to meetings after meetings, but if you all could do that. But I'll get you that information, Charles is in the car, I meant to bring it to you. The second thing I want to say to you tonight is that I want to give a shout out to the county for your support for the Brown Sugar Festival. I want you to know without your support, it would not be the success that it has been these last 40 years. And this year, it was the greatest success ever, best parade, the best pageant. Everything was to the honor of the glory. We give God honor, glory, and praise. And when I came before you last time and asked you all about coming to the opening program, everybody complied but you, Darrell. And next year, if I have to come pick you up, you're going to be there.
Sometimes.
Okay. For the last 30 years, I have been the emcee for the opening program and it's been an honor. I was doing that before I was even commissioner because it's a nonprofit that we are really a part of. And we just really support that. Congressman Diaz-Balart was a great speaker, really enjoyed him. And next year, we want to step it up to another level. So next year, I'll be working even harder to make that opening program even more successful. So again, I just want to say thank you for your support and it would not be possible if you all did not continue to help us. So I hate to run, but I have another meeting, but if you all could follow up with workforce development and continue your support for the Brown Sugar Festival, we'd appreciate it. And Carson, I'm sorry your horses wasn't able to make it this year.
I know. Tharrod carried up last week, though.
Okay. Thank you all.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Chair?
Yes, sir.
I know that Commissioner Swindle has a tremendous amount of thing, a tremendous amount of responsibility on his plate already, but I'm looking for that language that Ms. Taylor was referencing and I've read it from cover to cover as it relates to SB 10, Senate Bill 10, and the funding that's supposedly going to be flowing down to our region. And here we go. And, you know, this is Everglades Restoration Agricultural Community Employment Training Program. This is April 15th, 2018 through the Florida Department of Economic Opportunity. The DEO in cooperation with Career Source Florida. Does anybody up here feel that they have a better relationship than what Mike Swindle does with Joe Paterno?
You might. I don't know.
I do not, professionally and personally. And I would like to ask that Commissioner Swindle be the lead as it relates to this issue, unless, Commissioner Swindle, you just think that you have too much on your plate to take this under.
No, no. I'm absolutely glad to do my part and to tackle it.
Commissioner Swindle, one thing I'd like for you to ask right out of the gate is if we're able to arrive at a memorandum of understanding as it relates to us helping with the Glades training facility, you know, I think that this is a monumental opportunity. I'm pretty sure you all remember in the first meeting that we had, Mr. Carlisle referenced this funding source. I think that we have a very strong ally in Commissioner McKinley in Western Palm Beach County who butts up right up to my district. She and I have had a couple conversations about this, but the fact is, we have two legislators. Palm Beach County has about 10. And our ability to be able to curtail, influence, you name it, is much more limited than theirs is. And so that's why you're seeing the emphasis being placed at West Tech and in the Western Palm Beach County corridor versus those meetings being held here. It's not anyone's fault, it's just a numbers game. It's just like if you're a Division I athlete going to Cluston High School, LaBelle High School, you don't have the population center reading the news press or the Palm Beach Post, so you're not going to get as much recognition. It's a simple fact of numbers. And I- And I, I would just ask that Commissioner Swindle get engaged in this process because I know that you, you know it like no one else. And I believe that from your professional network and your ability to, to engage in this conversation, you're going to speak much more advantageous and, and from a qualified perspective than any of us would, so.
Carson.
The only thing I would add is that Commissioner Byrd, I believe that these meetings are all publicly advertised. And I think that it would, it would behoove us if we could have two representatives there. And so anytime you can make it to your schedule, Mark, that's, I mean, that's all publicly advertised. There's nothing that prevents them from going to those meetings and, and hearing and listening and, and talking together, correct?
Publicly, talking publicly.
Yeah, that's exactly right, yes, sir, thank you for qualifying that, yeah. And so the next meeting will be on the 10th of, of May, and, and y'all, y'all need to engage it. And I'm, and I'm ready to saddle up too. I mean, the entity that I represent with the Education Task Force, we know about these meetings. We, we, we know about the RACIC designation, we know about the funding of Senate Bill 10. Obviously, you know, we, we all helped walk the halls in Tallahassee to help make sure this money flowed. Thanks to our partners that we have locally in business, they helped make sure that these things occurred as well, so.
Who decides the split? Is that, is that a political thing?
I hope that it's a arm wrestling match or something, but I'm not real sure, you know.
And then could, could any of this go to the Glades County facility?
I think, I think that that, from a legislative priority, will have to be discussed. But I think that we have enough juice just sitting right here along with Glades County to make sure that that could, that those dollars could flow. Because technically, it's Hendry, Western Palm Beach, and the EAA area. And the Glades County Training Center does not fall in that, it does not fall in that circle on the box.
You mean Glades don't fall in?
Glades is not, as it relates to the map that was carved out where this funding has to go. But I still think, I still think Commissioner Harris, it's not being shady if the money comes to us and then we designate that it goes to that facility. That, you know, it's just all, all how it passes through, so.
Paul McGee, for the record, Glades Electric. Mr. Chapman and I both sit on the FARO Board, which is the regional economic development entity, was formerly Freddie. I don't think it would be inappropriate to ask Terry Burrows, who currently is the acting executive director of FARO, that any, any letters of support that the regional economic development entity could lend, as well as I chair the Glades Economic Development Commission, and I would certainly sign a letter of support of your efforts on, on behalf of, of doing something for the region. As a partner, I also sit on the Hendry EDC Board. So I get a lot of jobs if you do them for nothing. But we would certainly think that maybe throwing the weight of the regional entity behind it may, may even, if you feel it would add weight to the argument, I'd be happy to approach Commissioner Burrows about that.
Mr. Chair, I, I appreciate Mr. McGee making that statement. I think that it does add to it. And Mr. McGee, I hope that you'll carry back to the Glades County EDC that one thing that I'm going to push for from this board, and I hope that you'll help sell this, is that we have a joint ask of our state legislature this year for a million five in funding for the Glades Training Center that we can quantifiably show where it's benefiting Hendry, Glades, and Western Palm Beach County, along with Okeechobee Highlands and potentially East Lee. I will not be there, but thank you. Thank you, boss.
Mr. Swindle, you're going to run with that one?
I have my marching orders.
We appreciate that very much. We're going to be moving into the public hearings, so these are going to be public hearings. If you'd like to speak, we will get to that portion. This petition CPA 17-0001, it's a comprehensive plan for land use map amendment to the change existing agricultural land to multi-use land.
Yes, commissioners, this is an adoption hearing for the long hammock map amendment. It's, it came before you about a month and a half ago as a transmittal hearing. Tonight is an adoption hearing, and it would be appropriate for you to make a recommendation to adopt the amendment to the comprehensive plan.
Mr. Chairman, I move to adopt proposed ordinance petition CPA 17-0001 for long hammock.
Got a motion by Commissioner Swindle, second by Commissioner Turner. This being a meeting of the public, does any one of the public like to address this? And any further discussion on the board? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Good work, Ms. Emblech. Good work.
Second one of the public of the hearing, hearing of the public is going to be an ordinance amending the Hendry County Code of Ordinance, Chapter 1-53, zoning specifically, Sections 1-53-6.13, airports. Sections 153-3, zoning districts and Sections 1-53-4, dimensionals and density regulations.
Yes, commissioners, this is the first reading of this ordinance. The ordinance was presented to the LPA on May 2nd. They recommended that the board go forward with this, these amendments. And what we have tonight, what I'm going to do is I'm going to ask that AECOM and, I guess it'd be Monty Gettis from Montgomery Consulting as well, provide a presentation on the proposed changes. And then when they're done with their presentation, I do have some recommended revisions to discuss with the board that came up today from our, from the AIA group. And so I'd appreciate it if I can get back up after the presentation.
Yes, ma'am, thank you.
Good evening, my name is Monty Gettis, and I'm president of the Montgomery Consulting Group. And we're here as a subconsultant to AECOM to talk about incorporating Florida Chapter 333 into your local development codes. What I'm going to be talking about, you're going to have to put on your planning hat and envision lots of imaginary surfaces because we're talking about approaches and departures from runways, and we're talking about imaginary zones for noise. So Florida Chapter 333 addresses airport zoning regulations.
Excuse me, Mr. Chair? Ma'am, how many slides is this? Is this, is this everything that's been presented to us? We're going to go through the whole thing?
We're going to go through the whole thing, it, it won't take.
The reason why I ask is, does anyone have any pertinent questions, burning desires that they need to have answered? I've read it, I'm very familiar. All this is public in nature. Is there, is there anybody that would like to, or do y'all need to pull anything out is what I'm saying?
Will we see this again?
I think there will be a second reading, yes.
There will be a second reading, there will be another public hearing, and.
Be two.
This is one.
This is the first reading. This is, this is the first reading, and on May 22nd, you'll have the public hearing where you would adopt it as recommended.
In totality, yes, ma'am.
Then you have your changes in this one. Do you want to change?
Well, we can talk about this.
Okay, that's what I mean.
And, and any revisions that would be made based on our discussion tonight or any discussions before the 22nd would be incorporated into the version that you would have presented to you on the 22nd.
Yes, ma'am.
So are you going to read your, uh?
If you want to skip the presentation, I'm, we'd be happy to do that.
Don't matter to me.
Is there something burning or big or controversial that y'all felt needed?
Mr. Swindle, I'm not, I'm not trying to mitigate having a presentation, but I'm just saying, I, as I've sat through a thousand of them in my life, you know, it's like going back to a college lecture. I don't need another one.
We don't want to cheat anybody out of education.
Yes, ma'am.
Why can't Margaret go over her changes then?
All right, then, we'll skip the presentation, and if there's any questions that come up that they need to answer, we'll have them here on hand.
Thank you.
Okay, we've been having discussions today with representatives from AIA regarding a few changes that they've asked for us to consider. There are a couple of them that we're supportive of, and there is one that we are, have concerns with. I'll go through the ones that we are supportive of first, and that would be on, if you want to get into.
Just clarify, we have, we don't have those today, we don't have those in our package.
That's correct.
Okay.
Right, it just was, we just went through this today.
Got you, go ahead.
And so the, the first recommended change would be on your, on page seven of subsection four, land use restrictions, number two. And the language currently reads that no operations from any type shall produce smoke, glare, or other visual hazards within three statute miles of any usable runway of a public airport. The revision to this that's being requested, and again, staff is also supportive of, is in perenns after smoke, there would be an exception for agricultural burning operations permitted by the Florida Division of Forestry.
Okay, so that language will be added?
Yes.
Okay.
You have any questions on this language?
No, ma'am.
Okay. The other addition that we're in agreement with is that we would add language that would require that at the time of a permitting of a, a building or a development in the noise zone areas, that the applicant or property owner would be required to sign a letter of acknowledgement that they are in the airport, in that particular airport noise zone, and that they may be, they may experience the noise and impacts from the airport due to the noise in that area.
Once again, Mr. Chair, this is language that will be added to our version.
That's correct.
Okay, yes, ma'am.
Do you have any questions on that?
Where were you placing that at, Ms. Emblech?
I don't have a particular spot yet.
Yes, ma'am, okay, all right.
The, the next item is the one that staff has concerns with. And this is one that the AIA is asking to, to look at prohibiting residential development in all areas that would be within the 65 and up noise contour areas. And I do believe that you have maps and that also have property owner correlated, correlated to those maps, property owners, so that you can see that the areas that would be, this would apply to would be those areas again that would be in the 65 DNL and up noise contours. And if you look at your map, there is a light green contour. I know this is going to be tough for y'all to look at, but we, there's a light green contour that is the 65 DNL. And those, and the contours that go in closer to the runway are the other contours that we're talking about, so from 65 in, residential would be prohibited. The, the concern that staff has is that these contours overlay onto private property that surrounds the airport. And we're concerned about that this may be in, interpreted as a taking of their property rights on those properties. So at this point in time, unless the board wants to consider and/or give staff direction, we're not recommending that this language be included.
I'm not, I'm not going to take anybody's property.
And, and we're not taking their property, sir, what it would be.
If they can't use it, though.
It would only, it would only prohibit residential from those properties. They still would be able to develop any other non-residential uses.
Non-residential.
Non-residential, they'd be able to.
But they couldn't resident.
Correct.
Mr. Chair?
Yes, sir.
Why couldn't you do the same language that you said previously where they would just have to acknowledge? And then they could essentially build their own home in within the green lines?
And they would, that would, what I just mentioned previously.
The preclude, yes, ma'am.
This would, that would apply to somebody that came in to build a house in those areas.
Yes, ma'am, okay.
And these, these, would this be taking effect pending any sale of the airport?
No.
So this would be, this would be effective regardless of the sale of an airport?
Yeah, this is, this would be separate from any of the actions that are occurring with the sale of the airport.
So it's not depending on the sale, we're, we're talking about doing this and making that regardless. And then if the airport didn't sell, God forbid, don't let anybody take that personal on the biggest fan they've got. But if we go through that and restrict that, that was long hammock, that was the one we just approved. It goes right through the middle and takes in, encompasses 100% of the long hammock that we just approved. Which, if we're going to put a runway there, I don't think anyone wants to ever build a house there, so I agree. But pending that outcome, so is there a way to make it contingent upon at which time the airport sells? You do not want to build a house there, surely that would be common sense anyway?
I would recommend that you wait until the such time as, and it, it can't be contingent on something that is an unknown at this point, I'll say unknown, it's just, it's not, it's, it's not.
Not done yet.
It's not done, and we need, if, in my opinion, you would either decide to do this now or later, or if not at all.
In any of the public hearings, have you had any feedback from the residents there, the property owners?
The, in the, the community outreach meetings that we've had with some of the property owners, I'll say, some of the property owners have expressed the fact that they don't plan on doing residential. And these include some of the ones that are near the airport. But there are, or has been at least one that has expressed the fact that they want to be able to have their, the opportunity. In addition to that, we have an existing large lot subdivision that this would overlay on.
Directly north, correct?
Yes, sir.
Yes.
And.
And we would essentially be prohibiting them, and in my opinion, we would be opening ourselves up to the potential litigation of them saying, you're, you're, you're telling me, you're telling me right now, regardless of what you do, that you're going to prohibit my ability to sell five acre ranchettes north of the lake, uh, north of the airport? Right, for that use?
If you adopted.
Yes.
AIA's suggested alternative, but the proposed, staff proposed language would allow that residential construction.
To sign a document that says, I acknowledge, I'm going to be within the cone of loudness.
And, and do sound mitigation measures to reduce the sound levels that would have impacted them.
They would take that burden on themselves. We're not saying to the client.
Well, it'd be a building permit condition, to be clear, it's not such voluntary. I mean, it would be, we wouldn't issue the building permit without those sound mitigated measures.
Why do we care about that? If they want to deafen themselves by living in something that's way louder than ambient noise, then by all means. But how's, how are we responsible for that?
As long as they know about it.
I believe it's in the statute, I don't know.
I mean, I went to Brown Sugar this weekend, and I walked down the sidewalk. I made that choice to walk down the sidewalk. Tarsha Brooks had the largest thing of speakers I ever heard in my life, and my hearing is permanently damaged, I guarantee it. I didn't walk back through that area. If you want to live under a runway, how do you, how, I mean.
Did you have any answers?
Well, I think the language is, is saying that she wanted to propose to put it in writing in that language so that if somebody choose to.
They can sign off.
They can sign off.
But now what, what Mark, what our attorney is saying though, Ms. Byrd, is that we would now mandate that in their structure that they're living in, that we were going to go in and inspect and make sure that they put sound mitigation, mitigation, you know, device or whatever that takes that into consideration. We, we, you know, once again, I get back to, we can't control everything.
Just as a perspective, you would do that because the next property owner that did not have to sign the, the waiver would start complaining to the airport and, and to the, because of the sound. I mean, it's, it, you're, you're trying to protect for future noise complaints is really what you're trying to protect for. And the initial property owner could very well sign the disclosure agreement. But if you don't reduce the, the sound, you're going to get future noise complaints.
That, that makes no logical sense to me whatsoever, I'm, I'm not able to understand something.
I think what she's referring to is if somebody comes in and builds a house.
Yep, today.
Okay.
2018, they build a house.
And, and then they sell the house, and their next person, if, but, it has, anyway, let me back up. So if they build the house and they don't put any noise attenuation in there.
Yep.
Okay, and even though, so for, just that in a snapshot, then if somebody else comes in and buys the property.
Yep.
I mean, they could complain, I think that's. I mean, they could complain, I think that's where you were going.
Exactly, right.
Yeah.
Be too late then.
And, and quite honestly, this, what we're, the recommendation that, that anybody that builds a house would have to sign an agreement, we would recommend, or an acknowledgement that they're in a particular noise contour, and we would recommend that they would have to record that, and so anybody doing a title search would get that information, so the next person that would own the property would have that information as well.
Okay, but in the, in the world that I live in?
Mm-hmm.
What happens is, is now, now you buy John's house, right? But, but you're, you're a litigious person, you come in and you say, "You know what? The county came in here, they inspected this, and they said that there was noise attenuation, and the fact is, is that I don't agree with them, it is just too dad gum loud in my home, I'm suing Hendry County." You bought off on the liability, you signed off on the liability that that was performed.
Right.
I like the other way of, here, you, here, you live in, you live in a contour that's identified on a map, you're, you're choosing to live in there, it's no different than, you bought a lot in Pioneer, or Flag Hole, or Montura, and there used to be a flag pond right there, there's going to be more mosquitoes near that lot in Montura than there is in the lot in the dead center of Colston where there's more concrete.
Okay, I think we need to look at that a little closer because my understanding is, is that that requirement of, of noise attenuation on the residents that we're talking about is required by Florida Chapter 333, and so I want to look at that to make sure that we're not stepping into it, per se.
Okay.
Just on that point, I, I've looked at the statute, and what it says is that where we have conducted a noise study in accordance with this federal regulation and this, if you have any chain or anybody else can confirm this, or maybe, it, it's the study that's been done, that was a part 150, okay, so if we've done that kind of study, we have to prohibit incompatible uses as established in the study. And so the statutory mandate is we need to prohibit incompatible uses as determined in the study, except if such uses are specifically contemplated by such study with appropriate mitigation or similar techniques. So-
Okay.
So I don't know if the, the study said no residential, or if the study said residential only with attenuation, I'm not sure, but we have to follow what the study said.
Okay.
Ms. Imbleach?
Yes, sir.
You made this statement, that we'll either do this now or later. Right? A few moments ago.
Okay.
Why would we not do it later? Pending-
Not restrict residential in certain areas?
Until, until we have a contract in hand, we've changed the keys to the AIA group, we, we pack up our tent and leave.
Right.
Got no problem restricting it at that point, to protect them, so, but why, why would we do it now as opposed to later? Why would we not wait?
Why would we not wait?
Well, what's-
I'm not suggesting that we don't wait.
Okay.
At all. I'm saying it's either, if, if, if we restrict these property owners from being able to do residential today, or in six months from now, it's going to have the same impact.
So basically, we need to make a decision now, we're going to have to make a decision later.
I think, I think the property owners that are under there, if they knew, you know, that, that, that we had a pending sale and the airport was there, that they're going to agree, I don't think anyone's going to contemplate putting housing there. I think they're going to know that at that point in time, that the commercial side of life is going to be the, the best pace, place for that, but if we restrict it today, and God forbid something happens and we don't put that runway there.
Right.
We have prohibited that action from happening.
Sure, I agree with that.
Mr. Chair, the only thing I would say is that just off of what our attorney read, saying that we have to take active steps to prohibit based on an analysis that was given to us via a study from the consultant that was hired, so to speak, to say, this, this is, you know, it's essentially, and we don't agree with this, but it's people that are way smarter than us that have pay grades that are higher, have said, "Okay, if you're good, if you're going to take on this type of an endeavor, then we're going to have to make sure that there's a cone of influence that people cannot live within because damage will occur, or uncomfortable situations are going to arise, and, and we just don't want to have the, the potential of litigation there."
The, the Florida statute also is, is saying to do it now, I mean, the, they require that jurisdictions that have airports take action now.
Is your, is your car broke? Why would you repair it today?
Well, but I, I mean, it's for, it, it's for zoning to protect airports.
We don't have this type of traffic now, with the, you're preparing for traffic that's going to be greatly increased to what we have as far as sound and everything else.
Mr. Chair, would a great example not be of the LaBelle Airport, Mark, and, and the, the situation that the county had where, where, you know, there were, there were large real estate transactions that had to occur, because there's a runway strip, and what we're trying to do is we're trying to prevent by having foresight today, we're trying to say, "Yes," and I understand to your point, Commissioner Harris, we are potentially saying to someone that has property that's in that area, "You cannot do what you can do today, you cannot do it tomorrow." And so that is essentially impeding someone's ability to do something with their property. But I also think that if we don't do it based on what you just read from statutory requirement, we're opening ourselves up to a litigious situation as well.
I don't know if it's appropriate time for input.
I'm sorry, if we don't do it in the first reading in May, will we start, will we be starting back over if it's not in the first reading?
No.
No, we can make changes between now and then, um-
Second reading in May?
Before the, before the public hearing is what it's called.
This is a public hearing before the second public hearing.
Second public hearing, sorry.
But is the language that we're trying, we're talking about tonight, is, is it, is it consistent with what you're speaking of as far as the statute reads?
I, I believe it is, I, I, the only reason I say believe is because the draft came in, you know, with the restriction on soundproofing, you know, and so that's, I assume that the study said, "Don't allow residential without soundproofing," I, I don't know, I, I, I don't know what the study said, I wasn't part of the study, but the statute requirement is, if we've done a study, we need to do, we need to prohibit the incompatible uses or require mitigation as set forth in the study.
Right, and so we're currently, our staff's language is that we're requiring that they have some kind of noise attenuation on that, and that's how we have it today.
We're meeting the requirements of the statute a, as laid out from the study that you all assessed.
And I, I will, with Mark, I, not remembering exactly what the study said, I can't, I, I'm going to only presume that that's what it was.
Yes, ma'am.
With the change of language that you want to present?
Well, it's, it's the language that we have in there right now is, is what, and the, the change is, is what AIA wanted to put in there, and I understand why, I mean, we want to protect the, the future development at the airport so that they don't have encroachments by incompatible uses, but we're, it's putting us at risk for some litigation potentially, and we won't, you know, at, at this point, I guess, we, you know, we need to make the decision that we just, we go with what staff has recommended, and, and, you know, when we finish our study and we go back out to the public and, and to the commissioners on some recommended framework for the area, we can get more input, but bottom line is, is that the county has in the past and will in the future, we've approved, for example, sector plans that have been on multiple people's properties. We, we, as the county, the, the board has the ability to change future land use categories on properties that may or may not agree with everybody that owns property within that. It's, it's just, that's part of, you know, future land use planning, so that situation can, can occur and does occur in other jurisdictions as well, so I, what I'm getting at is, is that we're, we have the potential to address this in the future, and the only, you know, at this point in time, the, the, the risk, per se, would be that somebody would come in tomorrow with an application for a single family subdivision that would be in one of these areas, and I think what we could do is give us, let us come back to you with some recommendations here based on some of the comments and, and the input that we've received, and we might be able to come up with something that you could be, agree to.
Margaret, how far does this drift in the Glades? Glades County?
Are you talking-
Yeah, how many, is that a mile or two?
No, the green arc's about a half a mile.
It's not that much.
Half a mile?
Yeah.
Right, it doesn't-
From here to there's a mile.
Okay.
Will you see G3 to G1?
Are there any homes affected, are going to be any homes affected in Flag Hole with this, as it is now?
In Flag Hole?
Yes, ma'am.
No.
No. I can see the kind of underneath there.
Is there any homes in, in this zone?
Yes, I believe there's one or two homes that are within the area that we're talking about.
There's a couple places, there's actually fuel boxes down there, so I don't know.
I don't think there is.
One or two?
I think there's a pole barn.
There's, okay.
Ms. Imbleach, are you thinking on the north side? There, there's no homes.
No, I wouldn't worry about the north, I'm concerned about the south.
I don't think there's any on the south here.
It's just, it's a couple pole barns, that's it.
I thought we had turtle guy, turtle guy. Yeah.
There, there's a home on the north side, no one's living there.
There's nobody in it. It's actually a trailer, isn't it?
It's a home.
Oh, okay.
Did Tommy have something to say?
Yeah, apparently.
Okay. I'm Tommy Perry with Johnson Pruitt, we represent Long Hammock, which is within the green line, we represent the large lot subdivision which is in the green line. Within the application we've made for Long Hammock, we've stated that we would not ask for residential uses, we're developing a zoning, zoning application that would not include residential uses. Within the, the large lot subdivision, prior to his approval, he met at my office with me and with Commissioner McCarthy at the time, and we talked about the airport and the potential impact to his project, and he went into it with his eyes wide open. The green contour line goes into just a small portion of the property, and all of those lots you could build a home on without encroaching into the green line, you could build it outside the green line. So if you, if you take those two landowners and you take Hilliard Brothers, which I wouldn't think would oppose it, now, now you're down to the Buckthornton's Nursery and a little bit of Tiki Property. I think it would be simple for the staff to talk to all the landowners and not be willing to help facilitate that and, and get them to concur that this is not, not damaging to them. The part in Glades County, you're not affecting today because you're not changing the zoning or the, or restricting their, their land use up there.
Okay.
It might possibly be Hilliard property in Glades County, I'm not sure.
I don't think that is, I think it's Jewish hers.
So I, I think we're worried about something that's, that the landowners aren't going to be as worried about.
There is some private property though in Glades that, between.
Okay, well, this is an island, it's a governmental entity, so they're not going to build a house, it's just a strip of land, and then you said it's Hilliard, is that what?
Yeah.
So, I, I, I just don't see it being, I, I don't think it's a concern, I think if you're, if you're to be doubly sure, I'll, I'll be glad to help you, and we'll, we'll get all the landowners to comment on it.
And we, and we do not have to finalize it tonight, correct? We've got till next meeting, two weeks, right? I would love to have, I would love to work with you, Mr. Perry, to shake those hands of those folks and make sure that, you know, and if that's the case, I have no trouble supporting AIA's desire on it.
Mr. Chair, how do we transmit something forward tonight to give you an action item so that we can pull the trigger on the last meeting in May? There's no action that has to occur tonight, we're simply hearing and, and discussing, correct?
Correct, there's no action items, public hearing.
Okay.
Board feedback.
I agree with you, Commissioner Swindle.
She'll come back.
Yeah, the only, the only thing I would say, like I said earlier, is as long as we're following the guidelines, we're, we're right there where we need to be, I don't want to go on an assumption. Assumptions cost us a couple big, big purchases in LaBelle. The house that sat off to the side there, it was ridiculous, we, we paid more for the house than it was really worth, and then the other property on the end of the runway was, yeah.
It was.
I won't tell, but, you know, just Mr. Lapp can confirm that, and we should be good to go, because everything else sounds good.
No one says the attorney made a mistake or staff made a mistake, they say the commissioners were a bunch of idiots.
And that's what it's here for, to make sure we're going in the right direction, so, other than that, it sounds like everybody's good with it.
Everybody good?
Right, and have you still said a public input, I know we've gotten one, but-
Does anyone else would like to address this? Yes, sir, come on up.
Better watch this guy, smooth talk.
You guys bad, John?
You guys bad.
For the record, I'm Bubba Wade, really representing the, the airport tonight as the chairman of AIA, thank you, Mr. Chairman and Board members. Just to kind of clarify, I mean, we're kind of talking nits and nats here a little bit, I mean, your staff has been working with us great on, you know, all of these ordinances, the noise ordinance, the land use study and all of that, this boils down to one paragraph, and it really boils down to we all have the same goal. You have a greenfield opportunity here that no other airport in this state has, they're all plagued by encroachment all around the airport, they can't expand, they've allowed homes to come in outside the airport, you have the perfect opportunity here to let the future be what, you know, an airport would typically desire. It's not intended to take away somebody's rights or anything, so I would just suggest that, you know, we continue to work with Margaret and her staff the next two weeks, we'll come to resolution. But the goal, you know, for us is that, you know, it's built, I mean, it, it's as simple as either the agreement, or you can have a deed restriction if somebody wants to go build in there that says they recognize that there's an airport coming, and they're in the pathway, and they can't ever complain in the future. We do that on land sales around our, you know, sugar operations and all, such that if somebody wants to build a house there, they recognize in the deed that they and all subsequent landowners recognize that there's agricultural activities right next to them, and that they can't ever come in and complain about it. So there's possible ways to resolve these issues of the landowners that might want to build now, that they're going to sign something that they recognize that the airport's coming, and there's ways to do it so that there is no residential allowed. Other airports do that, Fort Myers Airport did it, so, you know, Margaret's been working great with us on all these things, this just boils down to some differences on one paragraph on how you're going to execute it, their concern is, you know, taking away somebody's rights and you all getting sued, we understand that, I think there's ways to work around that so that doesn't happen, so, we'll work it out over the next two weeks. Thanks, thank you.
So, so, hold up, Mr. Chair.
Is there any further comments to the public?
Any further to board?
We're not voting on this tonight, right? We're just, just a public hearing, good enough. FYI, we had some engineering updates, everybody has that, right?
Yeah, same as last time.
Pretty much. Okay. Uh, we have a letter from Hope Connections, everyone has it in your packet, everybody see that in your packet? Okay, so we're, we're good there. All right, we're going to move to staff reports, Mr. Chapman.
Mr. Chairman, members of the board, the first item up is a request to waive the formal bid process for inmate pharmaceutical services, this service has been bid out two of the last, two times over the last five years.
Move option one.
Second.
Motion made by Commissioner Swindle, second by Commissioner Bird. Any further discussion? CNN, all those in favor?
Aye.
Pose, motion carries. We're still on the courthouse complex, Ms. Davis.
I just wanted to give you a quick update on our courthouse complex project for security. A few weeks back, constitutional officers approached us and wanted to secure the courthouse, so we are working towards that goal, it's not happening quite as quickly as we would like, but there's a whole lot to it. Hopefully later this week comes, maybe next week, we'll be able to move towards a one entry point for the entire courthouse complex, we're working through some ADA matters for exit only and so forth, all we've done to date really is laid some concrete, basically, to meet ADA requirements. This week, they were supposed to come Friday, I think they were supposed to have come today, but I'm, I'm not sure, they were coming to work on ADA requirements for our doors, for our exit only doors. Once that is done, we've done a little bit of electrical work just to be able to plug in the scanners and so forth and move them, we've had a meeting with the constitutionals, we've planned to have another meeting with the constitutionals before it's implemented, and so just if you all had any questions about that that I might be able to answer- And so, just if you all had any questions about that, that I might be able to answer, um.
What did the school board decide to do? Are they gonna participate or wall off?
All constitutional officers have agreed to be treated the same, so we're not looking to wall any, anybody off at this point in time.
Even the school board side?
Even the school board, yes, sir.
So they're all gonna still enter the same way and exit?
Yes.
Will all exits be, single exit?
All exits will be, um, emergency exit only.
Gotta go back out the way you came in?
Correct.
Okay.
During the day for the public, uh, four late, for the employees after five, we're looking to have alternatives, um, just at that point in time.
Will they be there late? Will someone be there late?
Cleaning stuff.
And very early?
Coming to clean out.
Well, I mean, some of those people get to work at 5:30 in the morning.
So we have two security guards right now and, um, under contract currently with Giddens Security. And so we've talked to the sheriff's office and they have agreed to supply an additional deputy at no additional charge for the rest of this fiscal year, and so we would look at, for next fiscal year, for the budget, we would, we would be looking at that. So we're not looking at any additional cost for personnel between now and, say, September 30.
Can you do it with what you got now? With the two guards now, can you do it?
No. Right now, only if you're going to the judicial side, you have to go through security. We're looking at every employee and every public person to go through security, so they have to monitor cameras. So there's two guards right now that monitor cameras and scan everyone, so if you are going to increase the, the frequency of people coming through, you, you're gonna need more than one person scanning and, and you can't have eyes off the cameras. So that's where that third person will come in, whether it be a deputy or the security guards, they'll, they'll rotate, um, their processes. And it's important to note that we're having short-term conversations and then long-term conversations. Short-term being, um, getting the facility secured as quickly as possible with the least cost. And then long-term, meaning, uh, maybe something a little bit more palatable for everyone, again, at the least cost, but just work through some of those, uh, kinks going forward. Also, the chief judge has been involved, court administration, they've had their security, uh, person that is in charge of the entire circuit has come out, we've met with them, they've went through the plan, they've given their recommendations. And so, um, we're trying to keep everybody, you know, in the loop. And, um, right now, they're in charge of the judicial security, but when we go towards the entire facility being secure, they have to be front and center in these conversations.
So when the customer comes in, they gotta go out the same way they come in?
Correct.
So when they come in, go to Brenda's office, they gotta go back around and out?
Correct.
They're, they're gonna, I don't even really, no, I'm not gonna ask this right now.
So who's gonna, the other doors, nobody be able to use the other doors?
Emergency exit, no.
Just emergency exit.
I think it's important to note tonight, I wanted to bring it before you, let you all know what was going on and that we don't have it a hundred percent figured out. We are probably eighty-five percent there. And then before we implement anything, we're gonna have another meeting. We, as staff, will get in touch with you all individually to make sure you, everyone is comfortable and aware and is happy with what is going on before anything is done.
When are you anticipating to pull the trigger, Mr. Chair? When is that gonna happen?
As soon as possible.
But rough estimate off the hip, you think by August or September?
Oh, no.
October?
Much sooner, within weeks.
Okay.
For short term.
And every, and everybody's gonna be on board?
So far.
There's no rioting anticipated from any of the constitutional officers that you know of as of this point?
We were all in a room together.
We, we have kumbaya'd on the issue.
We have, we have, we have, we have ventured off in a couple areas and come back, so it, it's really been a pretty nice process.
I'll need to have a barbecue.
Well, and it's important, uh, Mr. Chair, if I might, it's important for the commissioners to note is that Henry has been at the forefront of this conversation, but within the 20th Judicial Circuit, the, the term is universal access. Uh, in other words, one way in, one way out for secured facilities, is going across every single courthouse within the 20th Judicial Circuit. We just so happen to be, because of our current events, on the front cutting edge of this conversation. But I believe, uh, and Jennifer, correct me, Charlotte is currently going through this, and I think Lee County is beginning their discussions. It is going to become a 20th Judicial Circuit-wide, and I believe also statewide, policy for universal access or one-way-in, one-way-out security for these courthouse facilities.
Part of Lee County is already that way.
Yeah, that's, I mean, that's a huge reason why.
Reality is, it's not, it may not be, you know, the most convenient thing, but it'll be safe. And then the other part of that is, Lee County is a judicial system. We have a lot of different things under one building that we need to look at. We need to look at that, turn that complex into a judicial building.
Yes, sir.
There's things that can, there's people that can be moved, there's buildings that can be used, there's a lot that can be done there to make this even less painful. So there, we, this, you know, in long-term, there's things we need to be talking about, they're gonna be tough. Some people's not gonna like it, but that's just not too bad.
I, I think that you're maybe touching on, we could move some constitutionals to different facilities. Well, Commissioner Wills, I'm gonna tell you right now, you, you know, whether you wanna accept it or not, Bud, your, your previous life allows you to know a lot more of the inner details as it relates to that. And that's for your expertise to me, you know, you, you, you need to throw it out there. You need to, you need to start giving some of those suggestions in hard cost and, you know, off of the hip. Year, for years, you did that, you know?
I've been throwing them out there, and that's, that's why I said, we, we will be having these discussions.
Well, I'm looking forward to it.
We've, uh, we've already started talking about it, makes sense.
There's a lot of square footage, you know, that I, that I know is available. I don't know if it's tens of thousands, but I think it's hundreds of square feet or maybe thousands of square feet. And yeah, it is gonna blow, I can just imagine the gnashing of teeth when we talk about moving people to wherever it may be. But at the same time, you know, we're, unfortunately, we're in a different world today than we were just in February.
And it's just a matter of a few shifts, it's not, not new properties, we have the properties, we have the facilities.
Yes, sir.
We just need to get it, just did it switch, combine it, and everybody in the right place, so.
And if I might, Mr. Chair, and I know we've had extension, extensive discussions about this, and we've just recently brought it up to the attention of the Public Safety Coordinating Council, just to prepare the concept, and I want to be very clear on the record so that we don't ruffle any feathers, that this is conceptual in nature. We're not committing to do this right now, so concept only. Is looking at the spaces that are currently inhabited by the state attorney, the public defender, uh, state probation, county probation, they're all way far away from the judicial complex where it is currently. And then we have other points of transaction offices like the property praiser and the tax collector that are in the courthouse. What would it look like? What is that cost estimate of switching places? Having a one-stop shop for everything that's judicial and corrections-related right across the street from the sheriff's office in the courthouse? And moving those other public point of transaction items down to where the state attorney, public defender, et cetera, is today off of Pratt Boulevard? It will do a lot for the traffic congestion within the parking lots. It will help us to reevaluate what needs to be done with the resurfacing of the parking lot and the redesign of the current courthouse. Uh, it affords us a lot of different opportunities to look at the highest and best use of our currently owned buildings.
You can get, you can get an in-house study, what it costs.
But we are gonna be working on that, we're trying to get over this first hump.
Okay.
Get the secured facility, and then we're gonna be moving for that long-term, so.
Well, Mr. Chair, I'm, I'm in favor of, of having all these discussions, the only thing I'm not in favor of, and I've heard this in recent months, is, um, you know, uh, I don't care if it's a grant, I don't care if Donald Trump flies down in his cool jet and lands at LaBelle and grants us a check for a hundred million, I don't care. If it's relocating a facility and building a grand Taj Mahal somewhere not on the existing footprint, count me in for a no vote. And, and.
That'll be two of us.
And when you start talking about new facilities and tens of millions of dollars, and the, you look at the baseline of our population, the lack of growth, and then the lack of dollars and revenue that are generated for the justification of these, uh, Taj Mahals, I'm out. So, re, reallocating, putting you back in, spiffing up, I'm all for it.
This is just switching.
This is just switching places, and the reality is, you take your state attorney.
Yeah.
Put them in the courthouse where they should be.
Yeah.
They do business there, state probation, county probation, they all do business there, public defenders, they all do business there.
And those buildings.
That's gonna take all the congestion out of that parking lot that we have. You take them to a facility where it's one stop down there, you have buildings that already have security in place for other entities to move in too, so it's, it's, it's not gonna be a major thing, we just need to get people where they need to be. And it's, and, and that's, that's the big key right there, just moving people around. You know, nobody likes change, but sometimes it's, that's just the way it is.
And there's room, too.
Plenty of room, we have plenty of room.
Even if they don't like changes for their safety, so, you know, I think they'd rather be safe.
They'd rather be down there.
I see, it's gonna be better for them, it really will. So, we can always move them in with Tommy.
Good deal.
Thank you, Jennifer. Mr. Parker.
Chairman, for the record, Shane Parker, Henry County engineer. I handed out for you the updated staff report for informal procurement for construction management services for the Henry County Health Department. We solicited, um, very, we solicited for construction manager services, we only received one response. And that was from Cristel Construction, and staff reviewed their proposal and staff's requesting authorization to negotiate a contract with Cristel Construction. That won't be the cost, that'll be just negotiating a base contract and helping bring back, before you, an amendment for a guaranteed maximum price.
Move option one.
Second.
Uh, motion by Commissioner Swindle, second by Commissioner Harris, is there any further discussion?
Mr. Bowen, Lachlan?
Yes.
Okay.
If you only had one, why did you have to have a committee?
Because if I found, it's the one submitted that I did not like, I wanted to go through the motion and say we reviewed it and we don't want them.
Did you hear that? Did you hear that? Is this based on who you like or don't like?
Qualification.
Cristel built the new courtroom, so if you wanna see their work, they built the new courtroom there and they did a lot of work out there for us, so.
You didn't agree with Alan on the first one, uh? On what? Twenty to eighteen.
It was.
Alan's keeping him a whole number so you can count them up. All right, so we, uh, we're, we're ready for a vote, any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, carries.
Twenty, twenty.
They might have worked together a little bit, uh.
Thank you, Chairman, the next one's authorization to use solid waste MSBU funds to pay for collection and disposal costs of.
Mr. Chair, my only question is, why are we not in disaster relief? Is it all gone, or what?
Running low, go ahead.
The dollars and cents, lady.
So, we have money in disaster relief, and we've been using that to pay the invoices as a whole. And then FEMA's gonna come back and reimburse us a portion.
Sometime in our lifetime.
So hopefully, sooner than later. But if you take it out of disaster relief, you can, but if you take it out of disaster relief, then it's gone and you're gonna need to put it back somehow. So how are you gonna put it back? You're gonna have to levy taxes somewhere.
But this is a, we're, we can legally use this for?
Yes, and that's what, yes.
Okay.
But we have enough money to use this, so we need to go and use it.
Currently, we do.
Yes.
But that fund will be replenishing itself.
And.
Shane, I just have to be a better manager.
Even with us still wanting to reduce that amount.
There is some, there is some funding in that MSBU account, but I find a part I wrote in my staff report.
I'll make a motion to approve.
Yes, sir.
I got one comment to make.
Second by Commissioner Harris, second by Commissioner Turner, you got some more stuff to add to this?
Under fiscal analysis, fiscal analysis, once all invoices are received, staff can inform the board of the most appropriate rate increase to the solid waste MSBU and as to when the rate increase should occur and for what duration. My point is, I don't know what the amount's gonna be, but I did a rough estimate and I think we're gonna be good for a year or two. It'd be a minor increase for a couple of years.
But you don't know that.
I don't know the amount, and I'm just putting you on notice that if we do this, some rate adjustment may be required.
Yeah, but they're not gonna take all of your money out.
No, they're not gonna take it all.
So they're gonna leave enough for you to float on.
They are, but I'm not gonna be able to float it as long as I could.
And the second part, you don't know how much they're gonna take out.
That's correct.
So it could be a little, it could be a lot.
And the rate adjustment's gonna be where?
Solid waste MSBU. I'm just putting you on notice, if you do this, and I'm not opposed to doing it, it may be.
Could be ten years from then.
Just wondering, since we got, you know, we got in a big.
Yes, ma'am.
Match over that already, about the cost of that, so. I mean, if we're talking increases, we need to make sure, you know, we're rolling back this year, we need to make sure those increases aren't gonna eat us up.
Wait, what, we're doing what? We're gonna do what? Roll back what?
I'm with you, Commissioner, I told you last year I'd be with you, so.
Well, I love election season, baby, I love it, all right.
I got two more years, bud.
My man ain't playing though, he's on it. But this guy, where'd he come from, rolling back?
Okay, we got a, we're waiting on a vote. Did we take a vote on this already? We did, we just, no, we had an election comment, so all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries.
We didn't vote on that second part.
Let, let me ask you a question.
I think we missed one on the top of this, Mr. Chapman, about the pharmaceuticals? No, we did it, sir. Okay, my mind slipped together, okay. All right, Mr. Lapp.
Let, let me ask a question, um, well, I just, I, I know we're still in active levels of, okay, Mr. Lapp, I'm, I'm making a motion to approve local state emergency.
I'll second it.
Extend the ratification.
Second by Commissioner Turner, second by Commissioner Swindle, you got some further discussion, all that questions right there?
We just gonna keep on doing it?
We're trying to find, we're, we're asking FEMA, we're doing this to make FEMA happy and we're pressing FEMA for a firm answer on when do we have to stop this so that.
Mark is so angry talking about this. So mad.
For the record, Shane Parker, county engineer, yes, he is mad, he beats me up regularly. Um, we had a meeting with FEMA, FEMA asked me to send an email specifically detailing it, because our FEMA rep did not wanna comment on it. And he will advise.
You comment, you can be held accountable.
He will be advised if it will affect our funding reimbursement, so.
Well, uh, St. John's, a handful of the counties up in the Northeast are still not.
Matthew.
Yeah, but Matthew, so.
Still waiting.
Yeah.
Well, they're still in an active state of emergency because they have not received all of their reimbursements, and so.
And so they're still.
I mean, the, the quintessential definition of bureaucracy is at play at this point.
That's why Governor Scott has commercials that are really gonna move the needle in his race against Senator Nelson. Have you seen it?
Yeah, every few minutes.
Every few minutes, that guy's war chest, woo.
Yeah, we got a motion on the floor, we need to vote on this, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Uh, we're to the hearing of the public, is anyone, uh, Ms. Monroe, I'm sorry, we have kept you here all evening.
I was spending time with you guys. So, good evening, commissioners. Um, I just wanted to let you know, um, in terms of updating you about behavioral health services for the uninsured, that CPE, or Centers for Progress and Excellence, has secured a location here in Cluston at 876 Sugarland, and they will be open for business Monday, May the fourteenth. Um, until then, they've had some other locations with Department of Health, but at least May fourteenth, again, they'll be operational in Sugarland. The other thing I wanted to give you an update about is that Central Florida Behavioral Health Network will be issuing a procurement for what they called a children's advocacy team or a cat team. And this will be about six hundred thousand, and it will cover both Henry and Glades Counties. And I'll keep you updated, as we do that, we'll be releasing the procurement in June, and we should be able to make an announcement about the award in September. And then we'll go live with services for the youth here October one, 2018. So again, I look forward to keeping you updated as we go along, thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Monroe. Anybody have any questions for Ms. Monroe, comment? We appreciate it very much, thank you, thank you for the literature as well. Do we have anyone else in the public that would like to address the board tonight? No, it's moved to a district, Mr. Swindle.
I have none.
Ms. Byrd?
Just like to say, I'm so thankful that no one was hurt over the weekend with brown sugar, and I appreciate everyone's help, um, everyone's prayers, and I'd like to thank the road, road and bridge and the code enforcement at the last minute coming out doing some things on our behalf, so thank you.
Mr. Harris?
Uh, Ms. Byrd, today is National School Teacher Day.
Teach appreciation.
It is. We appreciate you and Mr. Swindle and all the other teachers in Henry County.
Where's my card and my candy?
Yeah, you had that. You got it.
Uh, Mr. Swindle, do they, uh, do they still do GED in jail?
In jail? I, I don't know, my scope, my scope will not allow me to, uh.
Can't go in jail?
No, sir.
Cause they used to.
Yeah, uh, you know that for a fact, or you were there or what? Remember, you got yours?
No, it was a long time ago.
Oh, okay. No, I, yeah, that, uh, our, our, there's a distinct wall in that, uh, I cannot operate in that scope.
I figured you could do that through night school.
Well, when they get out of jail, they can come to night school if they want.
No, they won't do it, why, they don't have nothing to do.
Oh, okay.
They do service for special needs.
Uh, Mr. Nelson may know the answer to that question.
No, he's shaking his head.
Okay.
And then, uh, on, is there anybody anywhere know anything about what we could do about flood insurance? Cause these peoples getting letters where their insurance going up six or seven hundred dollars. And then the one right down the street is not getting them.
Yep.
And, and I don't know, it's just not right.
Well, it's a, it's a national program.
Yes.
We had to buy into it, and when I say that, we had to vote to accept it, and/or we run the risk of the county being kicked out of, 100% of the people being kicked out of the NFIP program. I would think if we looked at it on a gross volume of constituents throughout the county, we probably had more that went out of the envelope than we had that did come into it. But I think, Commissioner Harris, we could, I don't know if the timeframe is still allowed, but I think that we can formally, as a county, challenge the maps, the flood plain maps, but then we're going to have to make an investment. But I think that that investment would be, would, would probably quantify itself. We have to shoot LiDAR, we have to, we have to say, we have to show a historical perspective of no flooding has occurred, and, and I think that this is something that we should talk with the cities about. I know this, Bob Bot and his counterparts, they never really engaged the discussion with FEMA when this was all coming about. It was something that I reached out to Congressman Hastings, Congressman Rooney, Diaz-Balart wasn't even representing us, but I had conversations with him, and, you know, there were people that were living in Pahokee on the toe dike of, or Herbert Hoover, or in Bean City and Lake Harbor, that had no flood insurance, but you had people all over hookers. My entire constituency had flood insurance, and there was case history that they never had a, a structure flooded ever in the history of our existence, but because, because whenever Oak Atlanta Corporation sold some of the plats and they were developed, they never really wrote it into the flood insurance, they never really put it into the maps. So, Mr. Perry showed me maps that were impressive to look at, but you could just see where the population center was not, they didn't even worry about it. So, I say all of that to say, we would have to ask, we would have to ask our federal partners, so we would, we would reach out to Congressman Diaz-Balart's office to give us a reading of where we are today. I think our county staff could look at where the map actually shows, how many homes we have in the flood plain that weren't in there, what zone, and they don't do zones now. I don't remember what the language is. It's changed a little bit. But we have a huge ally in Western Palm Beach County, and that's why we were so, you know, so beating the drum of trying to get the Corps of Engineers to speed up their timeline on accrediting the Herbert Hoover dike so that the city of Cloiston can get pulled out, and the culverts can get replaced, and all of that will, will show that the dike is hardened, and then there can be a letter that flows accordingly that says the risk of flood is non-existent, or at least minimized.
Hooker's Point still in it?
Hooker's Point is out now.
A lot of Cloiston went in it. Wasn't in it, but went in.
A ton of, there, I think at one point there were nine or 19 homes, something like that, that, in the city of Cloiston that were, had flood insurance.
Because you'll go, this street, this house had, charging them, the house on the other end, they're not.
That's exactly right.
I thought it changed that we was A now.
You, you are, you are not in it now in Harlem, and you were not, you were in it before.
You know when you get your bail.
But then they came back and said we was A, so it'd be nice to see.
Yeah. And so, and so, you know, this was a bigger issue a couple of years ago, Commissioner Harris, because, I mean, some people have weathered this storm, but we had people that lost their homes because they were living on a fixed income, and when they had to get flood insurance, they couldn't afford their mortgage anymore, so.
How often are these maps visited? Do you know that?
No, like, one, I think once every 20 years, Chairman?
And it's last what, year or two they redid them?
Yes, sir. And the only reason, the only reason they did it, Chairman, was because the program was going bankrupt. There weren't enough payers in. And if you really drill into it, it'll make you, it'll, it'll make you crazy, because you look at the bureaucracy. I mean, you know, when they get two inches of rain in Colorado, they'll lose dozens of homes sometime, depending on where the deluge actually occurred, because their systems aren't built, and they, you know, their land, their topography doesn't deal with it. Whereas we get 26 inches through Irma in 20, you know, in 22 hours, and, and, you know, I don't know how many structures we lost, but it wasn't many, you know? And so, you know, the, the point I'm making is, is that we're a complete payer into the system, and they've, the FEMA reps, if you can get them alone and they'll be honest with you, they will tell you, the National Flood Insurance Program is upside down financially, and that they need more people to pay into it to make it whole again. And if you really want to get angry, you look at what the insurance companies are getting paid versus what the payout is.
And they're going to make money.
Making a lot of money.
Don't have to worry about that.
Well, can, can, can we direct staff then to Commissioner Harris's point? Can we ask you all to, to give us the numbers?
We've, we've done some of that. That's when the amendment happened with Harlem, as far as an amendment. That was done two years ago, and Margaret may want to speak more in depth to that process. We're happy to take another stab at it and see what other communities are doing. I, I would love to see geographically what areas you're, you're referring to, Commissioner Harris, with individuals that are having these issues currently. I know that we have reached out to the cities at one point, and there was some confusion about timing, but the county was successful with getting some of the map amendments done on our part. Margaret, do you have anything you want to add?
We, when we went through all of this, we actually had less people in the flood zone than we had in previous years. So, we, we had a good outcome with this, the more recent remapping, per se.
We did.
And we can bring that information back to you, but I think what we'd like to do is, and if you'd like to see it, we can send it out to you just by email.
Yeah, that's, just do that.
And, and we can get with you, Commissioner Harris, and, and look at what you're talking about. It's probably North LaBelle.
And the one, you know, you, you only going to hear from the ones that's in it. You're not going to hear if you got out of it.
Now, and, and a good point that Mr. Parker whispered in my ear on was that, you know, maybe they had increases for other reasons, or maybe they never had it, and it just, we should look at all the different variations on, on why this is happening.
Okay, thank you.
Now, I think what you will find is that the biggest reason is, is that if you have a mortgage on your home and you were pushed into the plane, and we all know that, you know, if you had, if you had a mortgage on your home and you were pushed into the plane and you didn't have it before, you have to hold flood insurance by, by the rules of that lending institution.
Yeah, they won't give you the money.
Yeah.
And that's if it touches your property. I got a 15-foot corner.
Wow.
Right. And, and on my property, I'm, I'm laying partially into one of the flood zones, so I've actually had to take out flood insurance, but I had a personal appeal process, not affiliated with the government processes at all. Fortunately, I had the wherewithal to be able to afford to hire a surveyor and engineer to be able to make that, that appeal. But there's some of this that can be covered underneath the government process of appealing, but some of it is going to have to be done by the individual.
Well, and that's, that's what I, to add on to what Commissioner Harris is saying, I would love to know, because Coria, Palm Beach County, I know for a fact, both of them challenged, and they were able to galvanize county resources. Granted, it's not like we have the planning staff or the GIS department that either of those counties have, but I, I would just love to see what they did, and, and then if it, if it worked, you know, for a dozen homes, two, or 2,000, it would be interesting to see.
But I have heard of people hiring engineers. They pay them $400 or $500.
And then they, they're able to get out.
Yeah. But then they, some of them don't have the money to pay engineers.
Oh, so, Mr. Chairman, the only thing I ask, I sent Charles another picture today of tractors going down 2780 with traffic all behind them. I'm going to bring it up every board meeting until I see signs up on 2780, and hope it just starts to get to be a bird in their saddle.
Did you hear that?
Tractor signs.
Signs.
And equine signs in Pioneer. And then, one thing I really want us to consider is this. Shane, could you tell me, other than WW companies, Rigidal that, that didn't do any cleanup, and Juan Bethencourt, I think it's ABC, didn't perform any cleanup that I can speak of specifically, who else? I know Rayburn, Raymond Catala, they all kind of worked together, I think with Greg Whisper on this side of the county. Who, who other than them?
That were local?
Yes, sir. Were there, there weren't, there weren't five contractors on this side of the county?
There was WW.
It was Kevin Rayburn and Raymond Catala.
They worked, they teamed up.
Yep.
I think anybody went under Rayburn.
I think so, and then WW.
Did Rock Tide come here? Rock Tide.
But are they, where are they from?
LaBelle.
Okay. But I'm, I'm talking about specifically this side. There were not more than three, it sounds like.
Nobody else that I know of on this side.
Okay. How many over there?
Oh, there's a bunch. Javier Daris.
Is that Peg Leg?
No, that's, that was One Step Express, which is Peg Leg.
That's two.
You had Rock Tide.
Three.
You had Pequeno Harvesting. Juan Mateo Sod, I want to say, came out, or might have brought one truck. I don't know if he finished through. There was a R&amp;R Harvesting.
Six.
You had a bunch.
There was a nu, uh, was it Rio?
Rio Back?
No, not Rio Back. We had a bunch of small individuals that came under Javier and then under Pequeno Harvesting, and they all came in and worked.
Did you stroke checks, did the county stroke checks to over 12 companies, or was it closer to six?
No, we only stroke checks to Ashbrit and to Thompson, the monitoring firm.
Okay. So, my, here's my request, Mr. Chair. I would love for Charles and the county engineer, in their spare time, and I take that back. I would like for them to make this a priority. It's, it's, or it's the middle of May. Hurricane season's going to be here in mañana, and I think that, that we should have a meeting. I think that we should galvanize these entities, Rigidal, ABC, WW, all the people that actually conducted business with us. I personally would love to see the county quadranted off. I don't know if you do it by district or neighborhood or what, but I, I would love to see that as I envision it. But, but it's to be determined. And then I would love to know, from a financial standpoint, what mandate we have to meet, and then I want you all to paint a picture of Utopia as it relates to Hurricane Irma hits today, and we want to mobilize and start cleaning tomorrow, and/or, as Charles said to me specifically when I was sitting in that chair over there, when the storm is sitting in the Atlantic Basin, these companies that we're going to hire will be mobilized and sitting ready with equipment to pick up. And I'm not mad at Charles. There was a number of reasons why that didn't occur, but I think that had it been local companies, Charles, you could have picked up the phone and made, and made these companies mobilize and been able to perform the day after. Now, granted, we didn't get gutted. We got hit pretty hard, but we were fortunate. And I just want to see what, what potential prohibiting factors stop us from being able to hire our people to perform the work in our community and to perform it yesterday in the event we experience another situation like we did last hurricane season.
Who's going to pay for it?
The county is going to front it.
And we're going to get reimbursed?
And we're going to get reimbursed from FEMA. And I know that there's a process. I know that there's a, I know that there's a big federal process, and there's all this, but let me tell you what. I think that if we, if we look at that language now and we're proactive, and we show where we took the active steps, and we bid it, and we, we agreed to terms today prior to the storm, to storm showing up, and they agreed to five cubic yards, or they agreed to, you know, three and a half, or 10, whatever the number is, and that's all written, and it's documented, and now they're going in, they're performing the work for that job that hasn't even occurred yet at a guaranteed number. I think, I think that we've worked through all the, all the hard part, because we had a, we had a contract in place, guys. We had a contract in place. The excuse was, well, it hit 67 of 67 counties, or it hit 64 of 67 counties. Well, guess what the excuse would have been had it not hit 67 counties? The excuse would have been, well, Harvey, did you see what Harvey did to Texas? We mobilized. And what I'm telling you is they're feeding us a line. We're going to get that line time and time again. They don't want to do the work here. They want to make a percentage, and they want to hire our, they're going to farm it out, and they're going to hire our people, and they're going to take a larger chunk than what we would like to see. And I don't know, I don't know if it'd even come to fruition, but I think that from a consulting perspective, if that's still part of the bail-a-wake that has to occur, and, and then, then you hire your contractor and they perform the work, but, but I think other than the consultants, and was it, it was Thompson Consulting, right?
Thompson.
I think even a portion of their employees were all from here. They just, they just queued up people that took their little class, and then they walked over, and then they got into an argument with whoever the contractor was that was bringing in X number of cubic yards about what is it really full of or not.
Thompson provides, they update electronic, the backdoor software, the GIS mapping.
Yes, sir.
And they used a lot of locals.
Yes, sir.
To just do the data collection in the field, work with the contractors.
And, and at the end of the day, you know, Mark may read two paragraphs right out of the gate and say, Commissioner, I'm sorry, I like your idea, or Carson, I think your idea is dumb, and, and we can't do it, and here's the laundry list of reasons why we can't, but I, I, I want to know that. I want to, I want to at least have those contractors in a room, at worst, and have them tell us they can do it for X, Y, and Z, and if y'all can make the mechanism occur, then, then we're going to engage in this process, and, and we'll figure out the details.
Then y'all find out about FEMA, Jennifer.
And, and obviously, we know that there's a process that has to be followed to the nth degree in order for reimbursement to occur.
If you can do that.
But the reality is, Commissioner Harris, when's reimbursement going to occur again exactly?
Two or three years.
We hope. Talk to our, talk to our colleagues throughout the rest of the state. There's a ton of them that haven't gotten a single dollar.
We hadn't either.
Yep.
Might not have.
But the, the storm that was a year prior to.
Right.
That's all, Mr. Chair. Thank you so much.
Well, I agree with you. If we can keep the money local, we need to. I agree with that 100%. Our guys did the work. They should have got the money. So, I had a great time this weekend. I enjoyed it. Those ribs were amazing. I walked back down the street to get them, and yeah, that speaker system was, it was legit.
It was brutal.
It was serious. I think I, I got about three steps to the right. When I walked past it, it kind of blew me over. Like, Lord Jesus, I'm deaf in that ear, and I hear it. I could